Hopefully, everything's gonna end. We are live, just so you're aware. So first, we'll have a moment of reflection. I'd get you all to stand, but I think Doug's pretty comfortable.
No.
Thank you. We're gonna move on. Next on the agenda here is confirmation of the agenda. Motion to confirm the agenda. Bob Wilhelm, Walter McKenzie, those in favor, that's carried. Grant, then we have consent agenda. We have items five point one to five point one two. And the council minutes from December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Does anyone want to see anything pulled? Daryl.
Uh, five point one two.
Okay, Todd.
I'd like to have a look at five point one zero and five point one one.
Okay. That's the one from Kingsville and Mat- Matewon or whatever it's called. Okay, so we're gonna move those down to. Uh, how do we move those down to other business? Is that all right? Or do you want to discuss them now? Your choice. Not hearing it, and then we're moving them down to other business. So that will be five point two, five point one oh, five point one one, you said, Todd, right? Okay, so can I have a motion to receive consent consent agenda items five point one to five point two with the exception of five point two, five point one oh, five point one one, and approve the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty council minutes moved by. Daryl, second by Matt Duncan. Those in favor, it's carried, moving on. Public meetings, oh, public meetings, hearings and delegations, we have none. Staff reports, first one up is the C A O on the resignation policy and employee retirement recognition policy. And Marion's actually gonna do that, but uh. Marion and Jess. And as soon as we can get there's you now.
There's the radio. Thanks.
You got, uh, there's Jess.
Marion's here.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning. Okay, so we're doing at seven point one one. So if you guys want to take it from there, go for it.
Through the Warden and members of council, good morning, everyone. My name is Jess and I've not had the opportunity to meet everyone as of yet. I'm the new H R generalist for the county. I'll just do a brief introduction of myself and then get underway with the report. I have five years' experience in H R. I have my C H R L designation, which is a certified human resource leader to the Human Resources Professional Association. I attended Western University and achieved my bachelor's degree and then went on to Fanchow College for a postgrad in H R. So I'll start with the report. Today, I'm going to go through the policy changes for employee resignation policy. I will take the materials as read, but I will share some highlights from the report. The reason why we are bringing this report forward is that the current policy is outdated. It was last reviewed in two thousand and seven. The current policy is confusing to staff as it combines resignation with the provision of service awards. The policy combines process and policy, which should be separated out. While gathering information for benchmarking, there was a clear separation between employee resignation and employee employee retirement recognition. Further to this, based on the benchmarking, there was a need for service recognition. We are working on a full service recognition program that will take more time and require employee consultation. We pulled benchmarking from the lower tiers and other public sectors. This policy is respectful of long-term service employees and balances the needs of public sector fiscal accountability. It was noted that we missed wording in the policy and that we will update it on the final version. Thank you, Rhonda, for noticing this. This concludes the highlights of the overall report. Are there any questions?
Okay, thanks, Jess. Uh, thank you for introducing yourself, because after I said, take it away, I realized that probably most people didn't know who you were.
No problem.
Anyway, uh, thank you for doing that. And so questions for Jess. Not seeing any hands. It's a good report. So I have a motion here that Perth County Council receives the resignation policy employee and employee retirement recognition policy report. And that council endorses the changes to the resignation policy. And that council approved the creation of the employee retirement recognition policy. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Doug or Councillor Casenberg, second by Bob Wilhelm. Any questions or comments? Last chance. Those in favor. That's carried. Thank you. So we're gonna move on to the health and safety commitment presentation, and I believe that will be coming from the same people.
Yep.
Okay, Jess.
Yeah, I'm just gonna share my screen and pull up the presentation. Can everybody see? Can everybody see the PowerPoint?
Yep, we can see it here.
Perfect. So twenty twenty-one health and safety commitment. Health and safety policy commitment. The health and safety policy policy commitment is part of our due diligence to our employees. It commits us to a safe workplace for all. Annually, council and senior management sign our health and safety commitment and post it in the workplace. This policy is endorsed by the Joint Health and Safety Committee, which endorses their efforts to ensuring a safe workplace, allowing employees to provide their input and ideas on safety in a collaborative way between management and staff. Showcases that safety is a shared responsibility between the employees and management. So this policy was endorsed by the Joint Health and Safety Committee at our last meeting on December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, and all members received a copy and reviewed it at the meeting. Twenty twenty saw a reinvigorating emphasis on health and safety across the county. From implementing the monthly safety cross, so this is basically a pictorial representation of accidents. It'll showcase the lost times and days worked without lost time on a safety cross for the employees to see. Introduction of a safety review at onset of meetings, first aid training in-house, so you can see a picture on the left. Safety audits of county buildings and more. And we also have a photo down below of the art archives, um, glass that went up as well. So twenty twenty accomplishments, we did ten risk assessments throughout the county. We implemented the monthly safety cross. We had nine joint health and safety committee meetings. Two policy updates introduced safety plan. So we did two COVID safety plans. Provided support to two municipalities and updated the Wimms hazardous material with labor labeling and information for employees as well. Since COVID nineteen, health and safety activities were increased across the county. Direct impacts include creation of a COVID safety plan. So we did one for union and non-union. And it's posted on our internet and it was endorsed by the Joint Health and Safety Committee as well. Increased frequency of joint health and safety committee meetings to discuss um, hot topics impacting COVID on operations, P P E use and staff concerns. On-site joint health and safety committee inspection to review measures implemented to protocol staff and customers from the spread of COVID nineteen and the review of code protocols and practices relating to opening of county buildings. So we are looking forward to twenty twenty-one. So the opportunities that we did see were the expansion of health and safety consultancy services to the lower tiers. Enhanced policy and programs directly correlated to enhance staff performance. We created standard operating procedures for resignation, mat leave, W S I B, return to work and short-term disability. We rolled out the respect in the workplace policy training and communication to the employees. Increased emphasis on health and safety presence throughout the county through the Joint Health and Safety Committee and through COVID site inspections. So some of the challenges and mitigations are staffing constraints. Two full-time employees for a hundred and seventy county employees, including seasonal staff. We will identify and work plan synergies to ensure efficient efficient resources, use of resources, sorry. Continuing of COVID pandemic impacting training, culture morale and ease of dispersing information in person. We rolled out some online training to be provided due to COVID workshops delayed till later in the year. So we had to put some of these workshops online and record them. Regular inspection and monitoring of inspection reports, continued follow-up with staff and measures to promote safety-first culture. So that is the overall twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one commitments that we are seeing from the Joint Health and Safety and HR Department. Are there any questions about the PowerPoint?
Uh, thank you, Jess. Uh, if you could maybe just take that off the screen, then I can see. There we go. Thank you. So questions for Jess on that uh, presentation. Nah, uh, Doug, hey.
I can't let her off the hook. So you, they, when you say your constraint is two people for a hundred and seventy, what's what's your constraint? You put, you put twenty people in a room, or you mean you have to do everyone individual because of COVID?
The, just the overall management of the employees and to roll out the program.
Further questions? Not seeing any. Thanks, Jess. So I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the health and safety commitment presentation for information. Moved by Councillor Aggett, second by Councillor McDermott. Questions? Those in favor? It's carried. Perfect. Okay, next we have economic development, the business check-in program. Thanks, Jess. Uh, now we need uh, Justin, I believe, right?
Uh, yes.
Uh, do you come in? Oh, there we go. We now have Justin on the screen. You're up, Justin.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, good morning, members of council. Uh, so this report that I've included here is uh, for council's information. It captures a series of business calls that we had done as economic development and tourism staff during the month of December. So uh, as you recall, the county had undertaken a couple of surveys earlier on in the pandemic to help us understand and inform our COVID response to businesses. Uh, during the interim time between these and these calls, we have obviously, you know, maintain engagement with our business community through delivering our programs directly through, you know, engagement with the B I As, business associations and various active committees. So we have been maintaining that engagement with our business community through those meetings. Uh, we did feel there was a time for us to do a bit of a temporary check with our businesses and had completed releasing another survey at that time uh, at the end of November, beginning of December, but uh, kind of in consultation with the community and hearing from businesses themselves, they were feeling a bit of survey fatigue. Uh, so we decided that we would take a more personal approach and do some some phone calls to businesses. So uh, we did conduct twenty-two business business calls with businesses across various sectors, uh, different sizes, small to large, as well as across the the lower tier municipalities to try to get the best sense of what was going on and really make sure we weren't missing anything. Uh, obviously, this isn't a statistically significant exercise, so we it was very much a feedback exercise and any of the recommendations and and findings we have from this are, you know, we're not considering them to be uh, statistically relevant, but we do feel that there is some value from this and it'll help inform our our ongoing code of response as a economic development and tourism unit. So just a couple of things I'd like to provide. Uh, obviously, the timing of the calls in beginning of December was was before the current state of emergency and even before the the lockdown over the Christmas break was seriously being, uh, was imminent. So, uh, we did, we did, uh, you know, ask questions about how a lockdown might impact the business and what their their feeling would be, how they'd be able to weather that as well. So uh, while, you know, the climate has obviously drastically changed in that time, there is very much information in that we gain that will help us both during the lockdown period as well as as businesses prepared to reopen uh, in the future. So, uh, just some of the, uh, another another couple of advantages of doing the phone call to post a survey at that time is that we were able to provide some direct uh, support. You know, surveys are are very much often anonymous and uh, being able to analyze dead data and produce results is is kind of a longer term exercise. Uh, whereas some of our phone calls, we were able to, you know, if a business was saying we're having trouble getting online, we could directly connect them with our digital server squad uh, and help them do that quickly. So there was some benefits to that. We will, I imagine, look at doing a survey uh, in the near term, but at this point in time, we've we did uh, choose this road. So there are a number of findings, uh, again, general in nature, not statistically significant or relevant, uh, in that sense, but uh, still very useful for us and help inform our our pandemic and COVID response in the near term. So uh, just some things I'd like to draw council's attention to that also were, you know, really valuable for us. You know, P P E actually continues to be a concern for our businesses. That is something that we, you know, there are programs, we had previously done some tourism care kits to help support businesses in P P E. Uh, and there are a number of business, a number of grants from the province to help support those costs. But uh, all that being said, uh, we did hear from businesses that P P uh, both with the lifeline when we were able to help support them in that beginning and continues to be a concern for them. So uh, you will see in some of our programming going forward that we we will likely do a second round of our tourism recovery care kits that were very well-received in the early part of the pandemic uh, through our tile funding, our our funding. So that is, uh, you know, really good piece of information that we maybe thought that P P had had not been as as needed as it as it actually is. So that's, uh, you know, a good piece of findings that we found. Uh, obviously, the combination restaurant sectors continue to be hard hit. That's not a surprise. Uh, but I think it does further help to emphasize for us a need to be a bit more targeted in our our response in our our programming to help them. That's the sector at this time. Uh, we did note that manufacturing, while, you know, many were largely spared in terms of shutdowns being essential. Uh, there are ongoing concerns about the impact of of outbreaks and how that'll strain their, you know, the workforces are already tight, they already have a tight labor market and how you know, an outbreak in a facility might be the might be something that'll cause a line to go down or or a shutdown in fact of a plant. So that is something that uh, while we can't, you know, impact that in a great way, it is good for us to know that that is a concern and to continue to uh, spread that message with our with our leaders in our uh, our political organizations, our governments. Uh, and actually, I'd just like to end on maybe one piece of positive news that we learned from these calls. So a lot of businesses, while we, you know, we've been pushing hard on on shop local and supporting businesses locally. We did actually hear that a lot of folks were experiencing some new customers, uh, locally who, uh, you know, they had previously maybe even going to larger urban centers to, you know, big box stores or larger grocery stores uh, to do their shopping in in London or Kitchener Waterloo. Uh, businesses and many of them had noted that they are, they were seeing a lot more local customers. Uh, and they anticipated, you know, they, part of the reason why they felt they were seeing that was, uh, because of the smaller stores, the ability to control the flow of people that a lot of, uh, businesses were saying, uh, people were feeling much more safe shopping locally than they were going to a larger urban center. So that's something we we would like to, uh, you know, take that message and maybe amplify it a bit. Uh, especially now when when businesses, uh, you know, we're promoting shop locals, the way to support community, but also uh, there is an argument to be made about it being a safer way to shop. So a little bit of positive news that we we found out as part of these calls. So uh, the recommendation is is for council to receive this for information. And uh, I would be welcoming any questions.
Thanks, Justin. Questions for Justin? I think Daryl, yeah, I got you. Yeah, Daryl's hands up.
Yeah, no, great, Justin. Excellent, excellent. I applaud you greatly for doing this. This is awesome. And as we get to the end of the meeting here, the, you'll see the reason I pulled five point two. Oh, there it is. And you you touched on just the safety we can pull on a local level and local shopping. You can probably have in small business as opposed to, you know, eight hundred people down Costco on the store. And frustrating, but no, thank you. And uh, this is this helps me myself.
Other questions for Justin? Doug, hey, Councillor, right?
I don't have a question. I just want to praise the Economic Development Committee. Um, we're doing next Wednesday night, we're doing a virtual economic development, small business. We usually have a meal and that, a breakfast. Um, but they put together with our guys, with Jeff and, uh, the girls in our office, an eight-page brochure, which is just beautiful about West Perth and Perth County. Um, and Justin's committee, I think Sarah was part of it. She's on our committee. It's just top-notch. And unfortunately, I took it to the store so I could display it. Um, or else I'd kind of just show you is on the Zoom, but it's a beautiful brochure put out by the Economic Development of Perth County and West Perth. And it's next Wednesday night at, uh, seven o'clock.
Thanks, Doug. Just so you know, maybe you could shoot that package out electronically to all the council members. I got an invite. Unfortunately, I've got three meetings already that night, so I won't be attending that.
Justin, do you have it electronically?
I got it from Jeff Brick. I think.
Yeah, okay, well.
I threw the chair. We can make sure that that's distributed to to council.
Okay, thanks, Justin. Uh, their comments or questions for Justin? Don't see any. I'm only gonna make one small comment and I'm not gonna elaborate on it. We were gonna have some good news for you today, but apparently we don't anymore. We have to wait. Anyway, uh, if I could have a motion, Perth County Council receives the business check-in program report for information. Moved by Councillor Callum, Councillor Wilhelm. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna go to Mike Adair. And as soon as we get him up here, we'll be going with that one.
Yeah, P P is gonna be a bit of a.
And I'm in.
Thanks, Mike.
You can hear me. That's good. Thank you.
We're good. We're ready, ready for your paramedic service update.
Good morning, council. And through the warden, um, the paramedic service update or a monthly update is, uh, before you've all had an opportunity to read it. And um, I'm just gonna provide a little bit of an update on a few other things. Uh, probably by the time I finish speaking, uh, the the information on COVID will have all changed and I'll have had about thirty emails on that. But um, the first uh, item here I wanted to, I just advise council about is on the COVID um, nineteen update and what's going on with paramedic services and how it's impacting us in our community. So the province continues to manage the vaccine distribution and there is some hopeful news. We expect that um, vaccines will start rolling out uh, uh, very soon in our community in terms of the long-term care centers, what that looks like for paramedics. I'm hoping that there'll be some good news later today. At least for some that are participating in providing vaccines in our community. Um, but there are still some time in front of us before our paramedics at large will have an opportunity to receive the vaccine. So while it is frustrating, um, we continue to uh, do everything we can to make sure that we're in the appro, we are appropriately queued and uh, ready to respond or ready to receive vaccines for those uh, paramedics that will be wanting to get the vaccine as soon as it becomes available. Um, aside from that, at the moment, um, uh, as well, uh, the, we actually have some communication that's coming from our family physicians that we'll also be partnering with and sharing. Um, you may all notice, uh, letters coming from even some of your own family physicians that are going out to the community that provides, uh, key information about the COVID vaccines and a little bit of information about our program um, in Perth County and will be educating our paramedics to that so that we can have consistent messaging across the board. Uh, turning to the lockdown, um, it's business as usual right now for paramedic services. That doesn't change anything. In fact, it makes us probably a little bit busier uh, for those that um, are at home and may have challenges, um, uh, getting into a doctor's appointment or those types of things. Um, and it also, um, is going to make us a little bit busier with, um, the rollout of vaccines in our community and uh, the role that we'll be playing. And part of the role that we will be playing is that, uh, some of our paramedics uh, where required will be, um, supporting efforts with many other healthcare providers in our community to provide vaccines in retirement, or sorry, in long-term care facilities at first. And then eventually in retirement homes or within congregate settings. Um, our stations remain close to the public, which has been normal throughout this pandemic. And um, we are revising our in-house, um, policy of when we need to wear surgical masks around our base just as an extra precaution. That's our COVID update. I want to turn to occupational health and safety. So this this, uh, we hadn't had our health and safety meeting yet when I wrote the report that's before you. But in follow-up to the consent agenda item on December seventeenth with respect to, um, uh, violence against paramedics in the workplace, as discussed in the Joint Health and Safety Committee meeting yesterday, the committee endorsed Peel's approach towards curbing external workplace violence towards paramedics. And I'd like to, uh, both commend and thank council for bringing this forward. Uh, the committee reviewed, uh, Peel's approach and framework and, um, are in support. Areas where we could gain some more awareness momentum, um, from the committee's perspective was through social media channels to disseminate information to the community with respect to that violence awareness. And we can have a look at that as staffers. And uh, currently, we do already provide posters and ambulances on violence, uh, violence prevention and uh, have policies in place with respect to how to report incidents when they do occur. I will bring, I will bring back a letter to council through the warden, um, uh, for that support, um, in the future. And finally, our mobile integrated health update is that the funding that we did receive that around that hundred and thirty thousand dollars is now in effect and, uh, was implemented this very Monday. And so we are already starting to onboard, um, extra patients in partnership with the Lynn. And from there, that concludes my, uh, update on the report.
Thanks, Mike. Questions for Mike from council? They're not very question answer asking today, uh, Mike. So I got a couple for you.
Thank you.
Haven't really had a chance to talk to you all. A good report. So way back in the day when we first come on board with Metavie, the one thing I had brought up is, uh, maybe dealing with some mental health, uh, parameters. And I know we've had some discussions. But more and more and more, I'm seeing where that's becoming the plight of the pandemic is mental health issues. Is there anything we can do to move on anything there to help with that?
Yes, through through the warden, um, or through yourself. Yes, we are, um, so some of our clients, uh, through the mobile integrated health program that we are seeing, um, that is, uh, I guess, part of the uh, part of what we are supporting is both their mental health, uh, through um, two different streams. One, we're referring to referring, uh, those individuals to make sure that they're connected with the mental health providers. And two, we're working with mental health providers to, uh, provide them with the support that they might need in the home. And that might even just mean a checkup on a weekly basis or that type of thing, uh, through the paramedic, um, program, which can certainly help improve their mental, um, health. So we're both identifying the needs and connecting them with, and then we're also supporting in place. Having said that, we are, uh, currently working with, uh, here on, um, Perth Health Alliance and, um, we're hoping to continue to look at how we can integrate that into the, um, I guess, standing program that we have and that we're investing in. And so as that, uh, program continues to be built, um, that will be a key element of, um, key element of what we are, um, ensuring that 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 it touches the aspects of the program that, um, we have in place.
Thank you. Uh, Daryl, question?
No, and this is where I struggle, um, since the beginning, especially now is our mental health. All the, all the great work that's been done around that for the last couple of years and continued to grow, especially within our youth. And that just got trumped out so hard and and it's frustrating because I assure you, the kids in the youth are suffering. I mean, thank God I live in the country and and my nieces and nephews as well. And we do have some activity, but it's not so good. They're talking with their friends and it's weird stuff that these kids are going through and And it's frustrating times for sure, and I have great concern. Oh, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, and just to respond to that, councillor, I think that's a very good point. And as we continue to develop the program, one of the things that we certainly are focusing on are age populations of individuals that may be seniors and, but we certainly don't want to, we certainly want to look at opportunities of all ages of the spectrum in terms of what we can do for the population that we serve, and that's something that we'll take into account. And that's a very good point. Thank you.
Councillor Casenberg?
Certainly, this is a huge issue associated with the pandemic, which is a huge issue on its own. I would like to inquire about the feasibility of, of perhaps building a dashboard or some kind of report about our understanding of the mental health calls or demands that are being made throughout the county. I'm not sure how that would be achieved, I have to admit. I think it's probably a pretty daunting task because we know that there are many different stakeholders who are involved in the provision of mental health services. But for this council to actually get some sense or some data about certainly how our paramedic service is responding to mental health calls, how many they get, even top-line numbers like that would be helpful to us, I think, to understand the burden of mental health challenge that has been brought about as a result of the pandemic.
Thank you, councillor Casenberg. I think through the warden, I think I'll get back to you on the feasibility question, because I would like to connect with staff first to look at what that might look like. And and on one hand, we might be able to bring some numbers forward. And then also in terms of that dashboard and the data that would support it. And then I would also be curious if you'd be interested in some of the stories that we would have to tell in terms of what we're experiencing in mobile integrated health. So I could come back with some key examples of things that we have done. Or, and we can, as a, as the governance, you know, for, for paramedic services in our community, you might be able to, you know, have some questions with respect to that as well. So that might be something that you'd be interested in.
Thanks, Mike. Other questions? Not seeing any. Just so council's aware, we have been doing a lot of surveillance testing throughout the county for COVID. We still doing that, Mike? Or we kind of got slowed down on that?
We are right, yes, through the warden, again, we are right now. And of course, you know, when I say I want to talk to the staff and get back to you on some of the stuff and figuring out in the best of times, it would be a little bit easier. But on a daily basis, these little fires will pop up and little local emergencies where all of a sudden there's an outbreak in a retirement center or nursing home. And we need to respond with, with other various partners as well. We have a bit of a matrix to make sure that we're being reasonable in terms of how we're deploying our resources. But at the same time, if we can get ahead of the curve and assess the situation, it certainly helps those facilities to end up in a spot that is where they can contain it a little bit faster. So, you know, to answer your question, warden, we are continuing to do that. And, and unfortunately, right now in our community, there's a lot of that going on.
Okay, and that just leads me to my last point. So you're in on these conversations, and I know councillor Wilhelm sent some emails out yesterday to some individuals. And the first Moderna vaccine that was supposed to come in into our area got redirected to quote-unquote hotspots. So you mentioned earlier, there should be some coming. Like how sure we are that? Because I think in a couple of emails I got copied on yesterday, they wondered why some of our long-term care people were second-class citizens compared to other areas of the province. And I'll say that out loud. And Bob Wilhelm messes his hand up, so I'll let him speak to that first.
Yes, my understanding is the Moderna vaccine was redirected to the city of Toronto. We were supposed to get Pfizer vaccines, but we don't have freezers to handle it. And I understand that for you, EMS that are going into long-term care can get the vaccine shots. However, my understanding is that the shots are on hold in the Western Fair for now.
Mike, any response there?
Yeah, thank you, councillor Wilhelm and warden. I guess a couple of things, you know, in public health is not here. And I would certainly defer some of the questions to them if they were in terms of being able to explain the decision-making, because of course, we don't have, that's not our area, right? But in terms of what I can say, and if the CEO, you know, we could have another conversation. I am part of some committees as well, that at times, there's information that may be confidential. And I don't want to direct counsel the wrong way here and say something that, because it's not the control of our decisions, that would be wrong. So what I will say is that, you know, vaccines are being distributed across Ontario, from what I understand, based on the needs of those communities. So if somewhere like Toronto has a higher rate of transfer of the virus, then, and things are more problematic there, then vaccines are being prioritized in that fashion. And so we do see communities, some communities like ours, that because we're in better shape, that it's taking longer for us to get a vaccine. There are paramedics, as an example, and that I can easily speak to in other areas of the province that are receiving the vaccine with respect to their entire staff. And then there's areas like ours where we haven't seen the vaccine yet in any of our paramedics' arms that. So some of that stuff is certainly indeed going on in the province in terms of that prioritization. And there is a framework that exists that actually determines that. And there's a, it's actually called the COVID nineteen Guidance for Prioritizing Healthcare Workers Vaccination, which is released, which was just released on January the eighth. And there's also an ethical framework for vaccine distribution. So, you know, to the best of my knowledge, our public health continues to follow that. And it certainly means that, you know, both because of logistics and as well as because of that framework, there are distribution routes or to different centers that are different across the province. And we are experiencing that locally right now.
Thanks, Mike. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot. I just, I had several emails and calls about that yesterday, so it was a point I was gonna make.
Absolutely, yeah.
Councillor Hurley has his hand up, I think.
I know I find it fitting, I'll chime in here. I was going to, of course, I was one of the two sitting reps on the health unit. I can help out here a little bit. There is definitely a bit of a methodology being used, as Michael has brought up there. But it's interesting times for sure. Even here on Perth, we have done an exceptional job of testing. And in the bigger cities, not sure at this point. It's, it's got very confusing. We talked about this openly in public. It is the methodology to vaccines to the most vulnerable. It is very unique times. We've done an amazing job, and we, there's a portion of our population that is very modest and came forward and all got tested, and they had it. But the big cities, there's so much movement. It's tough.
Councillor Casenberg, I think I see your hand up through all this glass.
Yeah, just a quick note that since our meeting has started, there have been two emails that have come in. One from the health unit, one from the Coalition of Health Units in the southern area describing the vaccine rollout understandings as of current hour. So councillors may be interested in that. I don't believe that these are sequestered documents. I think they're public statements. So in terms of the vaccination plan for our area, there was a little bit more information shared today, including a little bit about timelines.
Thanks, Todd. Okay, any other questions for Mike when we got him here? Seeing none. Motion that Perth County receives the Paramedic Services Update, January two thousand and twenty-one. Report for Information. Moved by councillor Casenberg, seconded by Rhonda Agats. Those in favor? Carrie, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Corey Bridges is next, and as soon as we get him up here, we'll be moving again. Corey, you're on top.
Thanks, Warden.
Updated fee by law.
Yes, thanks, Warden and council. What you have in front of you is an updated fee by law. During the analysis that was done with the planning divisional review for single tier, it was identified that essentially we were only recovering about forty-five percent of our county-controlled application costs. Due to the significant nature of these costs, I'm bringing a report to update the fee by law effective today to implement those new fees into our two thousand and twenty-one. It's also identified that this, these amounts are in our two thousand and twenty-one capital budget for planning division, which you'll notice when we get into the operational budgets for planning. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Corey? Can't believe you're gonna get off that easy. So I have a motion here, but just before I read it. So we're passing these fees so that they will be basically approved as of today. But it's also in your report that there will be a review in the third quarter of two thousand and twenty-one, if there needs to be some slight adjustments. Just so you are aware. And that will be done on an ongoing basis every year.
That is correct.
Any, Daryl, can I get you, Daryl, just to maybe lean a little closer to your computer? You're cutting in and out on me. I'm not sure what it's like for the rest, but it's kind of garbled a bit here.
No good, Corey, thanks there. Just when, when we, Pierre Chauvan there, we have him actually on, on the retainer, correct? That's how that worked, Pierre? From MSNBC, I mean, yes, there are consultants that are working on behalf of either the local municipality currently and the county. So if it's the county itself providing a items on consent, yes, they, they're on a retainer on providing services on our behalf. But as going forward with the new model, and Sally could speak to more of this, it's, it's looking that we'll have internal planning staff for that type of work. That's what I was hoping, I was, or was wondering. Sometimes it's, Pierre's a good fellow, I actually really like him. You get him, and it's just, I think we can handle a lot of stuff, so, yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, just so you are aware, they were hired to fill in all the gaps when we had too many vacancies, because we had to do something. And now we've got our full contingency of planners pretty well back on board. They will be basically eliminated going forward. And our own staff will be looking after that. Like they're gonna have to finish off some files they've started and worked on. But once that's done, they will, I don't believe they're getting any new files. Any, any more questions or comments? Not seeing any. I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty-one updated fees by law report for information. And that Perth County Council repeal by law three, four, eight, two, two thousand and fifteen, and approve three, seven, nine, five, dash, two thousand and twenty-one to include the updated planning application fee amendments. Moved by councillor McDermott, seconded by councillor Hurley. Questions or comments? Last chance. Those in favor? She's Carrie. Thank you. Believe, so we want to go into capital budget presentation next. You're gonna be staying with us here, Corey?
Hopefully, I don't get kicked out, but I, I think I should be here for this whole presentation. I'm gonna start it off, but with capital budget in itself, it's essentially the asset managers will be speaking to their projects. I'll give you a preamble on how the binder works. So if everybody's on their tab two of their binders, that's where we're gonna get started for this part of the presentation.
And just before you get started, Corey, I know people get a little tired of Zoom after a while and whatnot. So we're gonna maybe stick at this for a bit, or maybe take a short break. I'd kind of like to have the budget portion wrapped up by, say, eleven-thirty-ish. If possible, I'm not gonna push it to the point where we won't discuss it thoroughly. But we do have a closed session to deal with and a couple of other things. And I'm pretty sure that by twelve-thirty-one, people are gonna be pretty well sick of this format. So carry on. Unless council has other ideas in mind. You okay with what I just said?
Are we not going to do, oh, I guess that's your council reports, never mind. Didn't know if you were bringing Maggie in.
That's right, so we've got other stuff to deal with after, so.
Okay.
Carry on, Corey.
Okay, so therefore, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen and bring up the, essentially, the electronic binder that you guys all have in front of you. So if you guys can see that right now. Essentially, what's in the binder after tab two is what we have on the goal for two thousand and twenty-one. So this slide itself is what we have on the goal and how is it getting it funded. And if you scroll down to here, we have about eleven-point-three million dollars in, in capital projects this year. Three and a half or three-point-six million being funded from grants and other areas, provincial and federal. And about six-point-two million being, about almost six-point-three being funded from the reserves. And what is in there is an estimated amount with respect to the elevator, which John will get into. But it's on there as being financed of about one-point-five million dollars. As well, within this document, on the next pages, is the, you, you see the ten-year continuity of our capital projects for each of the asset managers. And then we get into the specific asset managers' areas. And within those sections, you'll see a ten-year continuity of reserves document that has all these projects on it, as well as the project description sheets that are specific to that project itself. I'm just gonna preamble the overall discussion within the capital budget. So what was presented earlier in my presentation in December was identified that our capital budget levy increase for two thousand and twenty-one is an effective one-point-zero-three percent increase to the overall levy itself. That in itself is a hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase over what was levied last year for capital. For example, we went from added about a hundred and seventy thousand to get to our close to three-point-three million dollars to be put away in the reserves to be used for future purposes. So when we look at capital projects, a lot of these capital projects are money that we already have put away to be utilized in the two thousand and twenty-one year. And then I'll, I'll speak to And then I'll, I'll speak to it a little bit more as the presentations go on. But that's basically the overall on the capital levy. So when you talk about capital levy and, and impacts to the budget for two thousand and twenty-one levy, we, we basically have to talk about capital levy and reducing that or, or increasing that. That's the only area that will affect the overall ending percentage that we see of the three and a half percent. So I'm gonna take it down to the computer systems, and I'm gonna ask Steve Drake, IT manager, to speak to his area. So Steve, so he'll be probably getting pulled in from the lobby right now.
There he is.
Are we good, Corey?
Can you hear me?
You're good. Carry on, Steve.
Good morning, Warden and members of council. So I will review the computer systems, capital projects planned for two thousand and twenty-one, pausing after each project for any comments or questions. Just a note that in the ten-year reserve continuity schedule, there is an amount being transferred out to the operating budget. That is to fund the replacement of our mobile phone fleet for our staff. So the first project is CF zero-zero-zero-one, fire radio. The fire radio system is a wireless radio communication system used by fire services in the county to communicate during fire events. The system is made up of equipment owned and operated by each of the fire services and the backbone network managed by the county. In two thousand and twenty, working with our local support provider and the fire chiefs, we successfully completed a complex move and replacement of radio equipment from one tower to another new tower at the Stratford site with little or no disruption or impact to services. In addition, a fire radio infrastructure checkup report was also completed and presented to council, building off the original report presented in two thousand and eighteen. In two thousand and twenty-one, the plan is to replace aging paging and communications equipment located at each tower site. We will work with our local support provider and the fire chiefs to ensure that all new equipment or system changes will improve system redundancy and meet everyone's needs now and into the future. The average age of the equipment we are targeting for replacement is well over twelve years. Are there any questions for CF zero-zero-zero-one?
Not seeing any up there, Steve. Carry on.
Okay, next up is CN zero-zero-zero-one, network equipment. The purpose of this project is to purchase equipment related to the network infrastructure due to age or new needs requirements. Network equipment resents the, represents the connectivity infrastructure, which allows staff to access critical internal and external resources, information and services, while also providing the public with secure access to county information and communications. Equipment identified for purchase in two thousand and twenty-one includes two video projectors with an average age of six-point-five years and an audio system for council chambers, originally planned for two thousand and twenty, but not completed due to COVID scheduling impacts. Of note, there is a possibility that funding for the audio system may come through an ISIP COVID funding request submitted by the county. Are there any questions on CN zero-zero-zero-one?
Get a hand up there, Mr. Wright?
Yeah, we're probably never gonna meet in two thousand and twenty-one, actually, in person, so you'll obviously just put that to two thousand and twenty-two unless you get money for it, right? Even a projector is, is redundant now because, I don't know, the next two years of council might all be on this Zoom stuff. So are we gonna prioritize what we can do and what we have to do and should do? When, when we're doing the budget?
And I would, I would agree with that. It might be impacted by the, the ISIP COVID funding request. If that grant is permitted, I believe there is a, a timeline on when that money needs to be spent. The projectors, I don't believe, are included in that grant request, so indeed, those two could be put off, especially if we identify that, you know, in-person meetings are definitely gonna be pushed later.
Yeah, I'll just add to that, the, those amounts that are required on the ISIP need to be spent by December thirty-first of this year to get the funding from the province and federal government.
Just a further note, you should find out about that ISIP fairly shortly. Because I know one municipality that got verbal approval, that I don't think we've had it written yet, but.
Just to add to that, Warden, we had two projects, and essentially, we, our deadline is, wasn't until January seventh, but we had an extension of five days to submit those projects. So they haven't actually have the complete application yet.
Okay, thanks, Corey. Carry on, Steve.
Okay, next up is CP zero-zero-zero-one, printers. Purpose of this project is to purchase printing equipment to replace existing devices due to age or to meet new needs requirements. Printing equipment identified for replacement in two thousand and twenty-one includes one large format plotter printer with a current age of over twelve years. Are there any questions for CP zero-zero-zero-one?
Don't see any hands. Carry on.
Okay, next is CS zero-zero-zero-one, software licensing. Purpose of this project is to purchase new or replacement software licenses in order to maintain vendor support, meet legal compliance, or changes in service usage requirements. Software usage requirements can be affected by changes in staffing levels, job requirements, new processes, et cetera. In addition, software licenses may be purchased to help meet new service offerings or to improve functionality and/or staff efficiencies. Key software licenses identified for replacement or purchase in two thousand and twenty-one include Adobe Acrobat Pro and Microsoft Visio licenses. These software licenses scheduled for replacement lag behind current industry versions and will or have already lost vendor support. Are there any questions for CS zero-zero-zero-one?
Not seeing any hands. Keep going.
Okay, finally, last one, CW zero-zero-zero-four, workstation replacements. So as equipment ages and newer versions of software require more resources, we need to ensure staff have adequate systems to fulfill their duties. The purpose of this project is to purchase computers to replace those past their useful age or due to changes in staffing requirements. The county currently has over one-hundred-and-five computers in use by staff at all locations. With this fleet size and in an effort to minimize the work required to deploy, support, and maintain it, we try to standardize on a small number of model types. In two thousand and twenty-one, seventeen computers with an average age of seven-point-five years will be replaced. All units to be replaced are no longer under warranty and are past the current useful life threshold set at seven years. Are there any questions for CW zero-zero-zero-four?
Council Kassenberg?
Just, just quickly, I assume, given the pandemic conditions, that some thought is given where possible to purchase net, net, like notebooks or laptops?
Absolutely, we, we'll do a, a review of each of them. Obviously, there are desktops that are identified historically, but as we go through, I, I do believe we actually go through and sort of do a recheck with the, the new users and the existing users to see whether uses or needs have changed, obviously, that would dictate moving to a laptop. Obviously, laptops bring a higher expense, so that, that goes into the thought process as well. But yeah, absolutely, especially with the need for remote work, cameras, all that, that sort of information, we'll, we'll take that into account when we decide what devices will be purchased going forward.
Any other questions? Doesn't look like any. I think we're good there, Steve.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Dave. Now we'll move on to Bridges.
Yes, Corey Bridges here. The area, this part will be a presentation from John. I believe the slide deck was sent out to the group. John will be coming in here soon. But he will utilize the presentation purpose for this, not necessarily following the, what's in the binder. But he could speak to that when he, when he's here. All he's here.
Okay, John, you're up.
Thank you, Warden Herson. Good morning, council. I'm just gonna get Corey here to stop sharing his screen. And, and I'm gonna attempt here to, to share mine with you. So we got, today will be a bit of a tag team presentation, and we'll have Bill Wilson joining us here to, to help me out, and Corey's still, still online here, so. And if, when, once we get to facilities, if we could just have Chief Adair join us as well, he's gonna help out on some of that. So just give me a moment. Well, I share my screen.
Okay, is that gonna be big enough for the people at home? I'm seeing nods. Good, we're good. Carry on.
Good, okay, great. So we're pleased to present the two thousand and twenty-one capital budget for roads, bridges, facilities, and fleet. And I, I had emailed council our presentation slides on Tuesday, and this presentation follows the agenda that is now shown on the screen. However, likely, a lot of you are following along with your budget binder, and unfortunately, our presentation and debt and agenda deviates slightly with the order in the budget binder. So our sincere apologies for this inconvenience, and rest assured, our treasurer's already virtually scolded me for this oversight. We will do our very best to ensure that you are on the correct tab and page for each project. And, but would please ask that you just sort of hold your questions until we complete our presentation. Certainly let us know if you need assistance with finding the correct page. This preamble is not in your budget binders, so please follow along with me. Here we have a listing of the assets that are managed by Public Works. And our road network alone accounts for over half of the county's asset portfolio with approximately four-hundred-and-forty centerline kilometers or eight-hundred-and-eighty lane kilometers. And that road network has a replacement cost of about three-hundred-and-forty million dollars. For over twenty-five years, our primary strategy in managing our road assets has been a recycle and repave program. And we've done a pavement preservation on the road if it was showing early signs of distress or deterioration. And with this strategy, we had hoped to achieve a twenty-year lifespan. In two thousand and twenty, we had a road needs study performed on our road network. This is done every two years, and the study provides a condition rating on all our road sections, provides data and the basis for, for our capital work program. And ultimately, it's a performance measure for our roads and pavement management strategies. So how are we performing? With our strategies, we are seeing an average lifespan of eighteen years before major rehabilitation or reconstruction. We're not quite achieving our target of twenty years. Our average pavement, pavement condition index is about sixty-six, that's out of a hundred, and our target should be seventy. One of the measures from the road needs study is system adequacy, which in two thousand and twenty is seventy-eight-point-eight percent. This means that we're just over twenty, that, this means that's just over twenty-one percent of our roads are in poor condition. And this adequacy measures, measures just above the target value of seventy-five percent. But the concerning thing is that we've been consistently trending downward over the last three or four studies. In two thousand and sixteen, our system adequacy was eighty-four percent. So while our road network is still in an appropriate range or condition for an upper-tier municipality, as asset managers, we just can't ignore this data and, and certainly where we're trending. If we continue to use the same strategies, we're not achieving our desired lifespan. We're continuing to fund, rehabilitate, or reconstruct at the same rate or number of kilometers each year. We should expect the condition of our road network to further trend downward. So how do we, how do we go about responsibly stabilizing or reversing this trend? And this next slide will give us some theory or building blocks to strategies that will enable us to stabilize or reverse that. We can see here, we have a graph of a typical deterioration curve for a paved road. And really, this curve could represent any asset for that matter. And there's really a couple of basic principles that I'd like to point out to here with the deterioration of assets. We see that an asset deteriorates slower over the first three-quarters of its lifespan, right here. On this graph, the pavement's condition index reduces about forty percent over the first seventy-five percent of its life. However, if the asset is allowed to deteriorate further, it does so rapidly over a much shorter period of time. An asset in an advanced state of deterioration or poor condition can quickly become a maintenance headache and use up valuable operating funds on fixes that don't really provide any benefit to the asset other than to keep it safe and usable. And I'll use potholes as an example here. The other principle that I'd like to highlight is the pavement preservation or pavement management strategy, strategies on an asset that is in good condition. So up here, we can see that pavement preservation done when the asset is in good to fair condition can further extend the lifespan of, of the asset and keep it in good condition. Payment preservation on an asset that is in fair to poor condition will be more costly and not perform as well or greatly extend the lifespan of the asset. So we consider this more of a reactive maintenance. Major rehabilitation or reconstruction of a road asset that's in poor to very poor condition will restore that asset to an excellent condition, but will be way more costly. So one of the key components of asset management is maximizing our return on investment, performing work and spending money when the asset is still in good condition. It's, and that's providing the best return on investment for us, and it's keeping our good roads good. The next slide shows a plot of our last four road studies and the number of kilometers of roadway we have by condition rating. Since two thousand and fourteen, the overall condition at, or adequacy of our road network has consistently declined. Two thousand and twenties road needs study condition data is shown on the blue blocks here. And we can see that there's not many kilometers of roadway in, in our network that are in the option, optimal condition range where pavement management strategies can be, bring the best return on investment. One other concern here is the number of kilometers that are in, in fair and going to poor condition. Payment management strategies here won't be as effective in improving the condition of the road and can cost more money. And if these, these roads here are left to deteriorate further, they will likely do so much more quickly. All of our road projects in two thousand and twenty-one are in poor to very poor condition, and that's not anything new. The majority of our capital program in any given year has been roads in this condition. And this is going to continue to be the case for the next few years. But we are projecting in about four years, four to five years, our strategies will transition so that we are spending more of our capital dollars on roads that are in good to fair condition and provide a better return on investment. So why are we not immediately moving to this strategy? And there's a couple of reasons. One being that we're catching up from the trend, from projects in two thousand and nineteen that we deferred. And we're gonna spread that backlog of work over the next three to four years. Secondly, as this plot shows, we've, we do not. Secondly, as this plot shows, we've, we do not have significant kilometers of road that is in that target condition for best return on investment. So we're currently looking at roads here that are in good to excellent condition and projecting that in about four or five years, a number of those roads will be in our target condition range. Am I suggesting that our past or current strategy is wrong? And the answer there is no. There are many benefits of recycling that make this a solid strategy. And we, we're gonna continue to recycle roads where it's viable. And we will continue to do projects that are on roads that are in poor condition. But moving forward, we're gonna be looking to spend more of our annual capital funds on projects that will provide a better return on investment. And that's in this area here. So we'll be improving more kilometers of roadway. And that's gonna help us stabilize or reverse the downward trend of our system condition rating. And the next slide is just gonna help out on some of these funding strategies. So the prime goal of any pavement management strategy should be to maintain or improve the overall system adequacy. And the funding level for managing roads assets should be set at a sufficient level to ensure that that overall adequacy does not decrease over time. So if we look at the blue line here, this represents the annual funding level, and that's around $6.8 million. And that will, what is what would be required based on our current replacement cost? And that is $340 million for our overall system. Based on historical data from our road needs studies, if we are to follow our current pavement management strategies, we're likely gonna need to be reconstructing more kilometers of roadway each year. And that's gonna require a funding level much closer to a $6.8 million level. So our goal is to maintain or improve the overall system condition at the least cost. And by altering our strategies and doing more work that has a better return on investment, we're projecting that the funding level can be reduced to 5 million. And that's still gonna maintain or improve our system adequacy. The graph indicates higher funding levels here over the next four years to catch up on the deferral of the 2019 program. But by about 2025, our annual funding level will be approximately $5 million. And I'm gonna pass it over to Bill Wilson, who will present our roads and bridges project for 2021. So in your budget binder here, you should be under the C Roads tab. And this is starting with our 10-year reserve continuity spreadsheet. And take it away, Bill.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Warden and Council. Up here is the the 10-year reserve continuity schedule for our road projects. And I believe Corey was going to just briefly review this slide with with Council.
Just for an education purposes, what we wanna highlight in this 10-year continuity is essentially the blue line. With the total contributions from the capital levy. So for example, in 2021, the capital levy of $2.4 million for roads is what is requested with basically an increase of $150,000 from the previous year. What I wanna highlight with asset management to close that gap, as you see it going along, we can't get to do the projects that we need to do with the money that we have by staying at $150,000. It needs to increase slightly over the next few years to get to approximately about $400,000 a year to close the gap by 2026 of about $4.1 million of total contributions to assist in our asset management strategy. Again, those numbers, 26, 27, 20, like that far out, it can be tweaked slightly. But it's just something to keep in mind when we essentially look at trying to reduce levy and reducing that 2021 amount. It does exponentially impact the future years because you gotta find that $150,000 somewhere. So that's just a kind of an education portion of the overall roads reserves.
And this next slide here is not in your binder here. And Bill, just review our 2021 capital road projects.
Yeah, this is just a brief overview here showing the the projects that we have included in the 21, 2021 budget. Perth Road 121, Line 55, Perth Mine 33, and Perth Mine 36. Those make up the the road, road projects. And then the the intersection control up at Perth Road 140 and Perth Line 91, as well as the carry forward of to the completion of the municipal addressing project as well as work in progress. So this here is is a map showing the locations of our county capital projects as well as some potential municipal projects at the, at our partner municipalities. What they have potentially planned for 2021 as well. With this, looking to show not only the locations of our projects, but how we could potentially group some of our, some of our projects with with their member municipalities through the form of some joint tendering practices. We've had success with that over the past and looking to continue with that as we can, provided that these projects are similar in in scope as well as location. So potentially, we have the opportunity to do joint tendering on on three, probably three tenders to to include some of this work from our member municipalities. So the first county road project here that we'll go through is Perth Road 121.
And I'll just cut in here, and you will find that under the roads tab on pages five, six, and seven.
So I'll just give Council a moment to find those pages. Apologize for jumping around here a little bit. So Perth Road 121 from the east leg of Line 72, which is in Millbank, all the way out to Highway 86 or County Road 86, sorry. That is about 10 kilometers in length, and we would be looking to do a cold in place recycle with hot mix surface overlay as well as some drainage improvements through the urban area of Millbank for about 300 kilometers. That would see some curb and gutter installation as well as some some underground storm work to outlet any of that surface water and provide better control. Over the past, we've had some some drainage issues through that section that can be remediated by installing some curb and gutter. That will help us on the operating side of things as well as provide better control to that surface water. This road sees about 2,000 vehicles per day, and it was last reconstructed in 2004. It did not provide or did not get us to that 20-year lifespan expectancy. John has a bit more history on on the reasonings for this.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. This was one of the very first projects that I supervised when I came on with the county. And I remember that this project was paved later in the fall. And I, and I know there are some mornings where we're struggling to get temperatures. It was pretty darn cold and we were just right around that five degrees Celsius mark where it's kind of the cutoff point for paving. And at that time, we weren't specifying the shuttle buggy or transfer device for the hot mix. And with this, with this road here, you could certainly see the end load segregation. And I certainly suspect that there's a number of compaction and material issues that were prevalent. Certainly, all these issues have likely contributed to the premature deterioration of this roadway. And so over the years, we sort of fine tune what we're doing, and we look to what's within our control. And that's including items in our specifications like a shuttle buggy, doing compaction and material testing, putting in desired completion dates and getting our tenders out early. That helps get our construction completed in ideal weather conditions. And having, certainly having the the locals piggyback or tenders in our contracts, that helps all of us in achieving economies of scale. So Bill will move on to the next project, which is Perth Line 55, and you will find that again under the roads tab on pages two, three, and four. Take it away.
Yeah, thanks, John. Yeah, just to note on that Perth Road 121 project, that one there would coincide with some work that Perth East is looking to do in that area. So that project there would would provide us the opportunity to some some joint tendering with with Perth East for some capital work in that project area. Similarly, with Perth Line 55, West Perth has some work in the area that we would include under the the scope of this tender. As far as our county project here, we're looking at a project budget of 1.54 million. And the project limits here would be from Moncton, Highway 23, easterly to Road 144. It's about a 6.8 kilometer section that would be recycled and repaved with the hot mix surface. There are some drainage improvements that we would include in this project through the urban area of Moncton. Those would be the installation of of curb and gutter through the a portion of the urbanized section as well as some, some catch basin and some underground works on the storm sewer system. So this section of road was reconstructed in 1998, and there was pavement preservation through the, through the use of micro-surfacing in 2012. Similar to the other road projects, this this road section is seeing some, some cracking and wheel rutting. And it's been consuming a lot of our operational, our operating budget and and time from our, from our crews to remediate those through the use of of crack sealing and spray patching and and those sort of remedial methods.
Thanks, Bill. And moving on to Project Perth Line 33, which you will find on pages 11, 12, and 13 under the roads tab.
So Perth Line 33, 2.15 million dollar project. It would be from Perth Road 107 westerly to the limits of the city of Stratford, approximately 9.4 kilometers, same construction methods, cold in place recycling with the hot mix surface overlay. There are some culverts that we need to replace prior to the roadwork as well as decommissioning an abandoned tile that runs parallel to that road for a portion of the, for a portion of the construction limits. This road's about 3,500 vehicles a day, and it was last reconstructed in 1994, so it has performed quite well up until now. There was pavement preservation completed on it, micro-surfaced in 2009, which extended the life up until, up until now. And it's, it's also consuming some of our operational resources through the use of crack sealing, pole patching, and that sort of thing to to maintain its its usability. And it is in poor to very poor condition as per the 2020 roads need study.
Thanks, Bill. And moving on to the next project, Perth Line 56, which is a a good portion of that is a boundary road with the the regional Waterloo. And that can be found under the, under the roads tab, pages eight, nine, and 10.
Yeah, so Perth Line 56 from Perth Road 119 easterly to the Wilmot East Oak Road, which is a boundary with Waterloo region. Eight kilometer project limits. There's about 6.8 of those that are a bounty road with Waterloo region. So we'll be working with them to to make sure that this bounty project is included pending in their, in their 2021 budget as well. So this is one that that may or may not come to fruition this year, just depending on the deliberations that at the region. So this road, same same construction methods, cold in place recycle with the surface asphalt. It was last reconstructed in 2001, and it did have pavement preservation halfway through its its life in 2020 or 2012, sorry. It's it's showing the same, the same surface failures as as these other capital projects as far as cracking and wheel rutting and those sort of surface distresses.
Great, thanks, Bill. Next project is the intersection control at Perth Road 140 and Perth Line 91. And that can be found on page one of, under the roads tab. And if Council will recall, in in November, there on November 19th, we brought a report to County Council. And it was approved to install temporary signals at this particular intersection. And of course, this is the boundary project with Wellington County. We expect this, for our portion, these costs will be about $60,000 for the installation. And I just update, recent update on this particular project. If the weather holds well and material materials come in on time, we expect that these signals will be installed by the end of February. But again, weather may dictate that. The next project is just to carry forward from our municipal addressing signs. And this is under the roads tab again on page 14, if you're following along in your budget binders. And if any counselor calls out bingo, I won't be surprised here. After we saw some raw material and production delays due to COVID in 2020. And so the local municipalities have been installing the new addressing signs throughout the county. And we expect that that installation will be completed this year, and we're carrying forward $25,000 for posts and mounting hardware. Next item under the roads tab, page 15 is work in progress. And this is an annual budget item of $25,000 to perform engineering or design work ahead of a planned capital project. And now Bill's going to review our planned road projects for 2022 and 2023. And this next slide is not in your budget binder.
Yeah, so this is just an outlook over the next two years for forecasted road reconstruction or rehabilitation projects. 2022, Perth Road 131, from potentially Perth Line 72 up to Perth Line 86. Those project limits may be adjusted as we look at things a little bit more closely. So and then there's Perth Line 8 with those project limits as well. And 2023, Perth Line 72, Perth Line 43, Perth Line 93 is as well as the south leg of Perth Road 121.
Thanks, Bill. And now we'll be moving on to our capital bridges and culverts. And that is found under the bridges tab, which is just before the roads tab in your budget binder. And the very first sheet should be the 10-year reserve continuity schedule. And Corey, we And Corey, would you like to speak to this a little bit?
Uh, yes, uh, just like I spoke with with the respect to the roads tenure continuity. Uh, again, look at the, uh, want to draw your attention to that blue line on the tenure continuity. Um, this is our bridge um increases for levy um to put money away for future bridge. Um, uh, reconstructions, repairs, et cetera. Um, this is not as drastic a change as you see in the roads area. Um, and it's because of when I became on board, this reserve actually was dipping into the negative. Meaning that the road reserve was essentially financing the bridge reserve. Um, so I'm going to commend count the previous councils and current council. Um, on moving some money around to get this reserve to where it needs to be. Uh, so you'll notice on this one over the next ten years, we're just looking at increasing the levy by twenty thousand dollars. Um, to get approximately um, the overall contribution to be around one point one, one point two million dollars.
Great, thanks, Corey. Um, Bill, anything to add here until we move on to the first project?
No, nothing that just uh.
Very good. So we're still in the bridges uh tab of the budget binder and I think actually. This one we kind of got right as far as uh sequential order, so. Uh, this is Bridge Rehab one twenty-one, one two six founded. Found on pages one, two, three and four of your bridges capital budget. Take it away, Bill.
So this this particular structure is located on Perth Road one twenty-one between line eighty and line seventy-six. Um, so that actually falls within the project limits of the road reconstruction of Perth Road one twenty-one. Um, this isn't a a big. Bridge repair project by any means, but there is some work that that does need attention. Um, especially prior to doing any surface roadwork through that area. Um, minor bridge repairs, uh, just to the abominable walls and the guardrail as well as some of the parapet. And as well as the the deck soffit, so. Um, that's one that we would likely look to roll into our our capital road contract for that area. More or less just to ensure that scheduling and and that sort of stuff is accommodated. Um, so that we're not left with uh with scheduling conflicts with any of the the contractors work um through that area.
Great, thanks. And the next project is Bridge Rehab one thirty-one. One four one that is found on pages five, six and seven of your under the bridges tab. In your budget binder.
Yeah, so similar to the structure on one twenty-one, this isn't a very large bridge remediation project. Some minor concrete repairs to the the abominable wall, uh, the barriers and guardrail. This uh Perth Road one thirty-one would be in the the structures in the construction limits for. Plan capital road improvements for twenty twenty-two. So looking to get ahead of ahead of that and make sure that these structures are all are all inadequate. State of repair prior to doing any uh roadwork in the future.
Thanks, Bill, and that project budget for one thirty-one, one for one is one hundred thousand dollars. Um, next is our small covert replacements and this is found on page eight.
So for the small covert replacement budgets, these are for structures that are less than three meters span. Um, and they are not included in our in our semi or biennial. Osim inspection reports, most of them are found on municipal drains. Um, other ones could be on, uh, they could be flood pipes or equalization pipes, something of that nature, mostly. CSPs, steel steel pipes. Um, this year we've identified one in particular for sure that is on the Chalmers Municipal Drain, which is. Um, I believe it is south of uh, south of Cool on Road one twenty-one. Um, that one we would be looking at replacing as well as a a couple of other ones that may come up. Um, throughout inspection over the the course of the spring.
Great, and we budgeted a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for small coverts in. Twenty twenty-one. Uh, next slide is not in your budget binder and just uh, just sort of a forecast for the next five years. And Bill, you just want to identify a few of these projects, please, please.
Yeah, sure. This is just a bit of an outlook for bridge and culprit replacements or rehabilitations over the next five-year period. Um, just maybe note that there are a couple of full replacements planned over the next five years, um, which will require some. Some obviously some some pre-planning and that's that sort of stuff to ensure that. Sure, that's uh contracts are uh are released and they include all the appropriate information and we. We make sure that everything's covered off for those particular projects. Um, as you'll note, there is one here in twenty twenty-three, it's a it's a cover replacement on Perth line eighty-six. Which is the uh, the busiest county road, so. That's one to keep an eye on. I believe it's located just to the west of Perth, uh, Perth Road one thirty-one.
Correct, just that's just outside, it's to the west of the work that we did this year. Thanks, Bill, appreciate that and uh. If we could get as we start going into capital facilities here, if we could get Chief Adair. Uh, brought in here so that he's ready to go when we get to paramedic services headquarters here. Um, council, we're now under the facilities and la- land tab. And that follows the roads tab in your budget binder. Um, Corey, would you like to speak to the ten-year reserve continent continuity schedule?
For sure, John, thank you very much. Um, again, I'm going to draw your attention to the blue line that's within the tenure continuity. Um, how money gets generated within this facilities reserve is essentially. External and internal rent that we charge to the the divisions as well as our counterparts. That are occupying space in our facilities. Um, so the rent in itself pays for the operational uh part of the budget. As well as put money away for capital maintenance type uh items that come along. And basically pay for those items that show up on the tenure continuity schedule. Uh, so I'm going to turn it back over to John.
Yeah, thanks, Corey, and maybe just to add to this here. Um, this schedule here has been built from our facilities condition assessment that was done in twenty eighteen. And it identifies capital maintenance items and cost estimates for components of all of our buildings. Uh, and you'll see by the next few projects here in twenty twenty-one. Uh, we see a continued commitment to access and security of our county facilities. Uh, the first project which under the facilities and land tab is found on page one is the courthouse elevator. And of course, I ballpark this project at one point five million dollars. A structural design plan specifications and tender documents. Uh, have now been completed by NA Engineering. And just so council is aware, we will be, uh, we have commissioned a more detailed pro- project cost estimate for this. Uh, will be undertaken uh here in January and we will be bringing. That cost estimate to council as soon as we can. Uh, the location of the elevator is going to require modifications to the hallway and washroom on the third level of the courthouse. We're going to lose office space on the second level and also lose space in the boardroom on the first level. However, we will be benefiting from this, uh, so we'll have a facility that will include an AODA compliant elevator. And and an AODA compliant washroom on level two. And this is just going to help us address some longstanding access and security issues. Uh, the construction timeframe will be approximately sixty-eight months for this project. Um, and I do know. Um, at the end of this budget presentation, we do have a resolution asking council to sort of provide pre-budget approval. To allow asset managers to go out and tender for projects. However, with this particular project, we're. Until we have that detailed cost estimate and and other information relating to the courthouse campus. Uh, we won't be going out to tender right away for this project until we get that information back to council. Uh, the next project here, we do have courthouse capital maintenance. And that's under the facilities and let land tab on page three. And here we have fifteen thousand dollars budgeted for an LED lighting upgrade on the second level. We have fourteen thousand dollars to replace two ductless split AC units on the second level as well. And also included uh in in here, but not in your project detail sheets in the budget binder. Is second level security door and council chamber upgrades. So. Here I provide a little bit of a description, security door to be located in the hallway between finance and mag. Uh, council chamber upgrades includes flooring, window treatments, electrical, IT and furniture. And Steve Drake alluded to the funding stream that we're applying for, currently applying for. And this project here is is one of the projects being applied for for project funding. Um, Corey, can sir, would you like to answer any more questions regarding or speak to the funding or?
Yeah, yeah, the only other thing is that we've identified is actually the eighty percent funding is the federal portion and. Twenty percent is the provincial portion portion. So if it's a right for for the amount that we're applying for. Uh, the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that were allotted. Um, essentially will cover the full cost of a project if if they're eligible costs.
Correct, thank you, Corey. I just wanted to note here as well that a number of their capital maintenance projects at the courthouse have been pushed to twenty twenty-two. And these are just projects that would be impacted by uh potential interior elevator construction. And those include masonry repairs to the front entrances, the wood doors. And the carpeting for the stairs and third level. So if Mike Adair is on, uh, can get on the screen here. Um, next up is Paramedic Services Headquarters. That can be found on page four under the facilities and and land tab. And this is a admin office renovation estimated at fifty-seven thousand dollars. It's to modify the current return to work area that you see in the picture there. This current layout does not support the new department organizational structure. And the area is also being modified to provide a COVID nineteen safe COVID nineteen safe work environment. I'm just going to let Chief Adair take it over from here on a little more on the COVID nineteen aspect.
Yeah, thank thanks, John, with respect to the uh COVID. Um, so there's, we put an importance on um upgrading the air quality. Um, in this facility, it being a paramedic headquarters, of course. And with some of the guidance coming from both the federal, provincial and local level, uh, public health units. Uh, with respect to that, I know John could speak more about the technical aspect, but in terms of the. HVAC system and the filtration to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen or in the future, any other similar. Or other respiratory uh type of illness. Um, in terms of this space as well, we'd be looking at um, creating some structural or physical barriers. So uh, walling off an office towards where you can see that window. And then enhancing the barriers uh between the different um uh workstations, which will. Both enable us to uh, which will both enable us to uh. To to separate persons and um meet the uh local and provincial and federal. Uh, health recommendations in terms of separation. And then finally. Um, we're doing this all in the mind with uh privacy. Um, so that the uh lock systems and the um access areas will be. Uh, will support the. Needs of our um organization as well as the mobile integrated health team will eventually be. Locating here and uh will be able to have uh their patient files secured and those types of things as well. So those are some of the um key aspects of this as well.
That's great, thanks, Mike. And just to note with this particular project. Uh, Treasure Bridges has made application for the project under the ISIP COVID funding. And just updated as he updated you on the last project, uh, this project will be eighty percent. Uh, if we receive the funding, eighty percent by the feds and twenty percent by the province. Uh, also at headquarters where, as I said, we are paying attention and. Uh, looking to improve the security and access at all of our facilities. Um, and here's just another ongoing measure. So we we're looking to relocate one of our current cameras. And add an additional security camera for monitoring of the ambulance base at this particular facility. Next capital maintenance projects involve archives. And that's found on page two under the facilities and land tab. Uh, here we have ten thousand dollars budgeted for a security camera system. And this system will tie into our current system that we have operating both at HQ and at the county courthouse. At the registry building or five here on street, we have ten thousand dollars budgeted for LED lighting replacement. And Mitchell Public Works, we have ten thousand dollars budgeted for. A security camera system there. And once again, that will tie into our existing uh security network. At Stratford Public Works, we have three thousand dollars budgeted for LED light replacements in our salt sand storage area. And at Milverton Public Works, we have thirty-eight thousand budgeted for overhead door replacements. And we're going to see a number of door replacements here. Um, it for projects in twenty twenty-one, both at public works and at our paramedic services basis and. Overhead doors are obviously um, a necessary requirement to for for our operations. We need to get in and out both from a public work standpoint. And certainly from emergency response at paramedic services and. Uh, overhead doors do represent one of the largest. Um, maintenance items with our facilities and they're obviously critical to operate on an on an ongoing basis daily. Uh, so this is an effort to to do redo the overhead door replacement here at Milverton Public Works. And at our paramedic services bases, Listel Base, which is found on page five of the. Facilities and land tab, we have three thousand dollars for card access from the ambulance bay to crew area. And these are, we're just identifying some security issues at our facilities here and trying to rectify that. Um, we also see for four point five thousand dollars for overhead door replacement at this particular base. At Milverton, again, we see seven thousand dollars for the replacement of the overhead door motors there. And twenty-five hundred for card access again, identifying a security issue between the ambulance bay and crew area. And four thousand dollars to paint to the Milverton base. At Mitchell, we see nine thousand dollars and and I apologize here for whatever reason in your budget binder. The entire project details didn't didn't show up in the printing of that. And so we have nine thousand dollars here for roof maintenance repair and that was identified uh by our. And so we have nine thousand dollars here for roof maintenance repair, and that was identified uh by our roofing consultant. Uh, and so this is just to repair uh an area of of that roof on on that particular base. And we have uh three thousand dollars for card access again. Um, si- similar security issue identified at to paramic services basis. And uh, and again, seven and a half thousand for the replacement of overhead door motors at this location. Uh, paramic services, Saint Mary's Base, we we did replace the overhead door motors uh as a maintenance item last year. Um, we had a failure and and is so in twenty twenty one, we are looking to. Uh, include four thousand dollars to paint that particular base. The last remaining things in facilities is furniture replacements and annually we have twenty four thousand dollars budgeted. Which varies from year to year based on our need for furniture replacements. We also have sixty thousand dollars this year budgeted for work in progress, and this is for. Engineering and design work for future capital facility projects. But this year we've bumped that up to sixty thousand dollars and earmarked it for the consultant work. On the courthouse campus directives that were resolved at our special council meeting on October twenty ninth of twenty twenty. And now we're going to move on to our capital fleet. And here we have the ten year reserve continuity schedule that's found. Next in your under the fleet tab of the capital budget. And uh, I'm pleased to say that this will follow the sequential order of our our capital fleet. So. Corey, I'll get you maybe just to briefly speak to the ten year reserve continuity schedule. And then Bill Wilson's gonna follow up with the. The fleet and and Chief Adair will be the last to go with the ambulance replacement.
Yes, uh, thank you, John. Um, so again, highlighting the blue column. Um, so how do we get money into the reserve for fleet? Um, while we charge a flat rate on certain areas of the division divisional budgets. As well as in equipment rate that we charge essentially within public works. Uh, both the equipment rate and this flat rate generate revenue uh for the fleet division. Uh, and then the operations get offset through there and whatever's left over from that gets essentially allocated to the budget. And basically, we try to generate a fleet uh uh rate as well as a flat rate. That both encompasses the operations of the bu- of the fleet as well as the capital replacement of fleet for the future.
And I'll turn that over to Bill.
Thank you. Um, so first up here, we have a a loader replacement. Um, budget at two hundred and twenty five thousand, which is actually a carryover from a twenty twenty capital project that uh that was. That was delayed and and didn't actually get to the to the tender stage. So. We have um since done some work on that replacement and just wanted to note that we want to look at. Leasing options versus um outright purchasing for this replacement. Um, so we have developed a a tender document that would. Provide counsel, the the information for leasing as well as the the uh capital purchase um for that unit. And then next up here, we have uh the the plow replacement, which has already went to council for pre-budget. Uh, we have three hundred and twenty thousand budgeted for that replacement and. Tender has already closed for the cabin chassis and that. That was jointly done with uh West Perth and and Perth South as well. Um, and we are working with the with the body bodybuilder, sorry, with the cabin chassis vendor right now to go through some. Some minor details before it is put into production. And lastly, for the public works fleets as a replacement of vehicle eleven seventeen, which is a. Which is a Chevy twenty five hundred series truck. I believe it is two thousand eleven. It's the year of that and there's forty five thousand we uh planned for that purchase.
Great. Thanks, Bill. And uh, next up is ambulance replacement and. Um, for for this year and ongoing, um, while the. The capital fleet and the ambulance replacement still resides within the fleet reserve. And in under public works, uh, paramedic services will be do doing the procurement for for this moving forward. And. I'll just have Chief Adair step in and uh finish things off for us here for our capital budget presentation.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Our ambulance fleet is on a seven year cycle of replacement, which puts one ambulance to be replaced next year. And so what we have done is we've included one ambulance in the budget, but in addition to that, you'll know thirty thousand dollars for a power load. On system retrofit and our power loads and uh the um stretchers that we've committed to as an organization. Last year and uh again, this year, um, this is part of uh that project and achieving a complete uh. Fleet replacement of those power load and stretcher systems by the end of uh five years, so the end of uh twenty twenty five. So we'd be retrofitting one of those uh next year and we would be looking likely at um. Doing a similar type of purchase that we did uh last year with respect to the ambulances, our partner communities uh through. Uh, medevy are ordering from what I understand, five ambulances this year, and this would be the sixth so that we can achieve some economies of scale. So if we uh coordinate through that. So those are those two pieces and I will show you the um retrofit schedule uh later on, uh, once we get to the paramedic. Presentation so that you will have an option, an opportunity to see how we're achieving the uh power load stretcher system in all of our vehicles by the end of twenty five. And back over to you, John.
Great. Thanks, Mike. And uh. And I guess I just gonna defer to Corey here. Uh, did you want Chief Adair to. Uh, finish off with his capital budget presentation and then we can open things up for questions or how did you wanna?
Well, I'm gonna direct this back to the board and um. I know you were looking for questions at the end of this part of the presentation, so maybe through the warden, uh, we look at answering those questions now. And then get into um the final section of medical equipment.
That works for me.
So we're open to questions.
Hey, you've seen the capital budget on roads, bridges, some equipment. Questions. Bob home.
Hey, I've got a a few of them and I guess I'll start with uh. John, uh, looking in long range, uh Fish Creek Bridge on one fifty one. It looks like the uh, whatever you want to call it, the cement railings, bears, whatever. Are in very poor shape and I don't see anywhere where they are uh planned on having some rehabilitation. And with that in mind, uh, there's discussions on Perth County taking over part of the Wayland Line. With Middlesex County and switching with first so. I believe that Wayland Line has to have another coating of asphalt. Have you talked to Middlesex County on their plans of doing that? Um, you want me to give you all my questions or answer those ones first?
Maybe you let me tackle that one first.
Okay.
And through you, uh, Warden, uh, um, yes, there there is a structure on road one fifty one. Um, just south of line two, if I'm if I got that correct. Um, yep, and yes, it is within our ten year plan here that that structure does have a rehab. In our in our ten year plan. It's not shown on this particular uh. Uh, continuity schedule here. It it is included. It will be included under bridge and culvert rehabilitations um with it within this ten year continuity schedule. Um, so with that, uh. Uh, what we tried to do is just sort of indicate to you some of the more major projects uh. Within the bridges and culverts on the continuity schedule. Uh, and as some of these ones that are identified later on in years under bridge and cover rehabilitations. You'll see those pop up as individual um uh project items and project details in that particular budget year. That's the same thing with with the roads continuity schedule. So these these dollars that you see here in in this line. Of uh bridging color rehabilitations, there there is actual projects tied to those dollars. We're just not identifying them for the. Take a space on the continuity schedule, but as they get closer to the budget year, that's when you're going to see the project details. Specifically with one fifty one, yes, that road is obviously part of the asset to swap that we're looking at with Perth South. And that includes the wood, their portion of the remain main remainder of the Wayland Line. And yes, we have had initial discussions as far as the extra asphalt with Middlesex County, but. Again, those those discussions are ongoing. Um, I know Perth South has got to that to extra asphalt budgeted within their ten year capital forecast. So those are, those are things that we've identified between Perth South Public Works and the County Public Works Department as far as looking at. These assets and the asset swap. And so those details will come before council and we've indicated uh. That that will be in twenty twenty one and tho- so all those costs that are attributed to those particular assets will be in front of council. Um, at this point in time, our initial outlook on that is is whatever work is required on those assets is relatively. Uh, similar as far as dollars and things like that. So um, that's that's just our initial outlook. Obviously, there's got to be a lot more detail looked into that and uh and again, we'll be confirming all that with council. So. It's quite possible to answer the question is that. Uh, if that road swap does go through, then that uh bridge rehab would then fall. Uh, to to purse out to to take over kind of thing, just as just as like the extra asphalt on the Wayland Line. Would then fall to the county and uh and and Middlesex as well. Does that answer that question?
Yeah, as long as you're in discussion with them, that's fine. And and uh, I'm sure Corey will find the money for it if they. Uh, decide to put asphalt down next year or the year after. Uh, how old are the Milverton doors that are going to be replaced?
Uh, they they are. I'm just thinking back, I think it was two thousand and seven that they were. That they were replaced uh there.
Okay, um, I guess I'm disappointed that uh. Three things, the doors aren't standing up and uh. Um, I've in my shop, they're twenty two years old and I have no intention on replacing them. Uh, the annual maintenance, is there annual maintenance done on the doors? Because I look at the paramedic overhead uh Mitchell overhead doors and and uh. Paramedics and Mitchell and uh work for replacing the door motors already that that building's not very old. Are we putting the wrong motors in that should be weatherproof? And uh, it's it's just. I was very surprised to see that uh they're being replaced. And I think you said you already replaced Saint Mary's.
Correct. Um, yeah. Obviously, some of these motors may be a a certainly within our public workshops, uh. Um, those doors are a little larger than what you'd see on the paramedic services and the motors are a little bit different. Um, obviously, these are things that uh are are used each and every day and they do represent we. Uh, big maintenance item for us and we want to ensure that these things are operational. Um. They are gone over annually, so obviously we do, we do try and do the preventative maintenance on on all of our things like that. So. It's just addressing uh some of that and and again, um. You know, a lot of this work and and identifying it, we do work with the. The users of these facilities as well so that uh their operations uh can be conducted efficiently as possible.
Yeah, I would certainly suggest that you uh have a look at another vendor or uh look at the motors you're putting on because uh. I believe they should be standing up a lot uh, a lot longer. And my last question to Corey is the ten year continuity uh roads uh. Corey, I see uh the city of Stratford is contributing um. Four hundred and twenty thousand dollars more uh in twenty twenty seven versus twenty twenty one. Is that to do with the annexation?
Um, no, uh, through you, Warden. Um, that is uh essentially. Um, when we did regional roads, all of the money that was for regional roads was put into the operational budget. Um, and since it was in the operational budget, there is that actual capital component that the city of Stratford is paying for. And what we're doing on a um uh slightly modified basis is moving some of that information, that money. To the capital from the operations. Um, so it's helped mitigating the capital levy increases, but it's then taking away from the operational uh uh roads budget itself. Um, so that's why you're seeing that increase is to get to the level of how they pay for regional roads. Uh, broken up between operational component and capital component. You'll notice as well, um, the bridge reserve tenure continuity. Um, basically, uh, they're at the what they uh percentage wise allocate towards bridges. It's the roads area that is uh is is the impacting one where it's increasing over uh uh so many years to get to. The level and have a a appropriate breakdown. So basically, the city of Stratford pays for about sixty seven percent of the operation with their money. And the thirty three percent goes to uh roads and bridges reserves.
Hey, thank you. That's all the questions I have, Warden.
Any other questions? Doug.
Bob, I would just, I would like to speak more to Bob's door thing. Um, I just wonder how often the springs, you realize the motor on a door only has to pull about one pound. The springs are probably never adjusted on those doors at the top. I'm not blaming John. I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying that door should, you should be able to lift it up with your hand. But the springs are never done. A good, a good maintenance is to tighten the springs every year and then there's no pressure on the motor. We'll look into that because a quarter horsepower motor will lift a sixteen foot door if the springs are adjusted right. I do have other questions, but Bob wants to speak.
Um, yeah, I, that's why I asked about the annual maintenance, uh, if they were done, because when when our doors are done. That's what they do. They loop and and uh service the springs, et cetera.
Doug.
Um, John, on the roads, we see the same thing on every county road up there. Road what? Road running. Um, I drive all those roads every week. As all know, I don't do anything except drive around. Um. Are we, we're just grinding them and repatching them. Are we checking the base like that Moncton Road that Todd's Road, I'll, I call it Todd's Road. One or fifty five coming out of there. He's happy. Um, like it's. It's it's rutted bad going north. All the pictures you showed us, just putting asphalt on top is not going to fix that, right? Is it the the trucks like that fifty five? I don't know how many salt trucks. I think about as many as drive through Mitchell last week. When it's a salty day, there's, I'm gonna say there's two to three hundred. A dump truck and pups drive through Mitchell every day. Um, at least we have the police sitting there now getting some speeders. What what's the base like on some of these roads that we've got?
Uh, through you, Warden. Um, yeah, we do certainly with Perth line fifty five that's, I think we showed on our slide there. It's got to twelve percent trucks and um, you you know, that is one of the. The highest. The highest percentages of truck traffic on any of our county roadways. You know, it doesn't necessarily represent as many, many trucks, say on Perthline eighty six. Where it's about nine to ten percent trucks on that particular road. But it does, does have an effect here. And well, there is some wheel path fatigue here. And some, some wheel running. This does have a good base here, the granular base. So. If if that was not the case, we would not be promoting the recycle repave. Program here. So when we go to recycle this roadway. We're looking at the asphalt depths that are, that's currently there. And and certainly the granular base that's that's underneath. So. By by performing that reset, that hundred mils of cold in place recycling. And the fifty five mil left of hot mix, that's providing us. The structure here to for that roadway. So when we go to recycle. The idea here with recycling is it's a bridge, a bridge for the cracking and things like that. So it doesn't reflect through and. And again, just providing greater strength to to the road.
More questions? Walter?
Yeah, there is. I guess, I guess mine is maybe more of a comment than a question. And it isn't to do with roads, it's to do with with facilities and with the elevator. And I guess I'm a little. Concerned that we don't get too far down the road here with with going to tenders on an elevator in the courthouse when we're not too sure. Of the other part of it, of the whole campus thing and the cost on that. It would be nice to have that information available to us. And then we can make a decision of which way we want to go and and go from there.
Thank you through you, Warden. I think I addressed that in my presentation is that while we do have. The design plans and the specifications and we and the tender documents can be prepared based on that. Yeah, we're not, we're not looking to go up to tender until council has additional information in order to to make that decision. So. You know that, as I say, well, we will look for a resolution at. At the end of these discussions here to allow asset managers to go out and proceed to tender for these projects. This isn't one of those.
Okay, I I guess I apologize. And John, I misunderstood you. I thought there was going to be tender ready and we were going to get a price on it.
Yeah, through you, Warden. I I will be bringing back a more detailed cost estimate for this project. You know, that that one point five million is is really just a ballpark and. In order for for council to make effective decisions, you need to have a better project cost estimate.
Got somebody in the middle there. Cory?
Through you, Warren, just a comment to to Council Mackenzie. I believe on this October twenty ninth special meeting, there was a resolution that was passed to get basically get this elevator to. A tender ready state and that is basically what staff is currently doing.
Lori?
Thank you through the chair. That is correct. We are preparing the documents, but the other direction on the twenty ninth. Of October was to come back with a. Some information on putting in addition on the courthouse, which would locate that particular elevator in that that addition. So. As John indicated, we would not go to tender until council makes a decision on that. We anticipate coming back with that information sometime in the first quarter or very early in the second, probably April.
Other questions? I gotta keep dodging around the glass here every once in a while. It gets blurry. Okay, I got a question. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill. Did you say we had some culvert work to do on line thirty three? Before we did that resurfacing? Or John, Bill, John, either one can answer.
Yeah, yeah. My understanding is there's, there's two CSPs there, small diameter culverts that need to be replaced. Before we do any work on the surface. That will be done with our internal forces. And there's a whole tile also that I understand runs parallel to that road that has caused some. Some issues historically with with some with some sinkholes opening up in the in the shoulder. Or the outside, outside edge of that asphalt that also need to be remediated and. Fully abandoned before we do any surface work there as well.
Okay, thanks, Bill. So we'll get at that culvert work in lots of time. So it has lots of time to settle.
Yeah, that's a plan. That's on the list for one of the early in the spring projects. Once we get around to it.
Thank you. Counselor Hurley, do I see your hand waving?
Yeah, yeah, thanks there. I'm wondering that that potentially could be an old field pile as that road was wide and. And maybe for those when that highway didn't exist. So is it actually an old field? That road never used to be either with.
Through you, Warden, that's correct. We're doing a lot of investigation on this particular tile. And you're involving the drainage superintendents and things like that. So. That's. Sorry, go, go ahead, Counselor Hurley.
Where is it? I I might know somebody really well who might know something about it since there's been from image. Himself, he was a pioneer, so. He's pretty good at it.
So it cert, it's sort of, it's on the north. The the problem area is on the north side of the road. And it's just in the westerly portion of of the project area. So. More towards road one eleven and one ten.
Okay, no good. Thanks. Otherwise, that road has held up very well.
That road. Is is awesome. The road base there, it was really well reconstructed back in the day and I believe it was nineteen ninety four. Yeah, that's only got two lists of hot mix on it as well. And this is where. We see code in place for cycling. Being a very viable option here and. So no, no, this is, this is a road that has performed well over the years.
Okay, more questions? Not saying any, maybe we could just do the equipment. Is Mike still up there? Yep, there's Mike. We can get the equipment done. Then we're going to take a five minute break. Everybody needs to stretch, including me. Anyway, Mike, if you want to just do the equipment for EMS there, be great.
All right, sounds good. Cory, are you putting your slides back up or your? Thank you. So, thank you through the chair. I'll go through this. Our paramedic service equipment, there's only a few items on here. And I'm not sure, Cory, if you wanted to speak to the tenure reserve, this particular slide, and then I can go into each of them. I. Would like to, you know, say that part of our twenty twenty one work plan is to. Redo an evergreen project to make sure that all of our capital lines are. Organized as they should be and to be able to break things apart in a way that. Would be meaningful. So for replacing one particular piece of equipment, it's on a cycle. A schedule, maybe in contrast to a couple of pieces of equipment every year. So. Cory, do you have anything with respect to this first?
Sorry, I was controlling the slides and we we were in the operational budget and I don't think they want to get there yet. So.
Capital.
Now, just. Duty here, that blue line again is is basically what. The shared services components pay for for putting money away to replace medical equipment in the future. We're currently looking no change for from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one at a hundred twenty five thousand. But you'll notice that it is increasing up to about a hundred and sixty thousand by twenty twenty eight. That's basically all. I'll turn it back over to Mike.
Okay, thanks. And I'll go through each of the items here. Then the first item is. Our replacement of metal equip, medical equipment. And this item is parceled with EM zero zero nine, the defibrillators. We are. Moving things around in the capital budget, but you can leave. So the replacement of medical equipment, we replace medical equipment annually for a variety of different reasons. And one of them being is the wear and tear of those pieces of medical equipment, their life cycle may have ended, or there may be. Either damage or reasons why we would, we would need to repair or replace those pieces of medical equipment. So from the capital. Budgets for actual replacement or major repairs. The also, the other thing that we'd be using this for this year is. As we build our mobile integrated health program, our PCOP team, we would be using this to purchase any. Specific patient care assessment equipment that we require. For that, for that team. So with that in mind, the between this and EM zero zero nine, there is a complete total of. Twenty thousand five hundred and ninety five dollars that is in that capital budget line. Any questions on that one? Or should I just wait till the end and then we can do them all at once?
As it is, there's not that many. You must have zipped through them all, Mike, and then we can go back.
Great, okay. The next one is the EM triple zero seven training mannequins. This budget line is for our simulation equipment. We use simulation equipment in the same way that. An airline would use a simulator to practice in a safe setting. In particular skills that aren't done very often, but have a large impact on patient outcome. And so for this year, there's three thousand three hundred dollars in this budget line, and that's for replacement parts for our simulation equipment because there are. Parts that over time, as you use them, need to get replaced. And so that would be what we're looking at this year. And then moving to. I EM zero zero one one, the power load stretcher. So our power load stretchers are what we have committed to in terms of replacing the stretchers on our ambulance fleet. So they are the stretchers that are able to upload a, thank you, Cory, for bringing that up. That that. Help load themselves into the ambulance. There's a reduction of WSIB claims. It's safer for both the practitioner as well as the patient. And so for this year, we have one replacement in the capital budget. Budget and that is with the order of a new ambulance. So we. Are using a preexisting spare stretcher, parallel stretcher that we purchased this year for that retrofit, but then we still need to add one stretcher. For this year, and that's in the capital budget right here. On the slide that Cory has up on the screen right now. You can see that between twenty one and twenty four, that our entire fleet of what I would call. Currently our manual stretchers will be replaced by power load stretchers. So instead of the. Impact of replacing everything in one year, we're looking at a replacement cycle. And by the end of twenty twenty four, we should have our. Entire fleet outfitted with these power load stretchers plus one spare for breakdowns. And that will be, that will help us with respect to that. So. And that will be parceled with when we order vehicles or if we're not ordering vehicles. Retrofitting the power load system, but that would come out of the vehicle budget in terms of when we order an ambulance at that time. So moving to the final item here is EM zero zero one four, and that's the automatic external defibrillator AED. All right, we have a. We have the AED program in our community. And the AEDs that are owned by the county are coming to the end of their lifespan. And so we have set aside sixty thousand three hundred dollars for replacement cycle. This will also be parceled with again, our work plan for twenty twenty one, where we will be doing a review of the program. And all of the current contracts with our municipal partners. As as part of this, and then to replace the actual defibrillators, we're estimating it to be around that amount of money. And this was planned for previously. So those are our items that are under the auspices of paramedic services and open to questions.
Questions for Mike on those items? Don't see. Counselor Will, thank you. Just a quick question and not, please excuse my ignorance, not knowing the power stretches, et cetera. Are they heavier than the other ones? And if so, are the vehicles we have and are purchasing. Able to handle the additional weight?
Yeah, there's a little bit more weight. I'd have to get back to you on the specifics in terms of the exact amount. If Deputy Crowley was here, you could probably. Let us know. In terms of the vehicles being handling that weight, it's, it would be minimal. We're looking at. A few like, we're looking at a few pounds as opposed to anything that would be significant. So. The 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 loading system and the stretch of themselves are a heavier unit, though. But the automatic feature of them lifting in is what helps the human aspect and as well as the patient safety aspect of it. And there are no modifications to the vehicle required beyond the installation of that unit. Or expected extra wear and tear. And in fact, I think one thing that I didn't mention before is that. We anticipate based on other paramedic services that are using the power load systems is that. We would be able to transfer that power load system from one ambulance to another even after seven years.
Bob? Yeah, I was referring to the whole, the combination of the whole unit. How much extra is that going to add? So appreciate if you could get back to me. Thank you.
Your on on weight.
Other questions? Rhonda?
I don't have a question for what we've seen today, but I just have a, a thing I'd ask Cory to look at. We've talked about our stabilization. Fund and how we just can't use it because it creates problems the next year that we have to collect more money. So I would wonder if Cory and his team would could look into a way of trying to use that stabilization money to shift it to some other. Department or some other account so that it can help lower the levy some in some way. Maybe talk to some of the other treasures. Rhonda Fisher's found a way in Perth East to do a little bit of that. And I'm wondering if if you could look into that as well.
Through the Warren, thank you, Counselor Eggers. We are trying to utilize that systematic approach. In utilizing the levy stabilization reserve. The unknowns is is what every year we have is in within a surplus. But we we don't go into a year to determine that we'll have a surplus by the end of the year. So the systematic approach, if you notice, again, if you go back to look at the continuity for the next two years. On the levy stabilization reserve, we're essentially saying two hundred sixteen thousand in twenty twenty one. But then there's another a hundred eighty thousand to come out in twenty twenty two. And then I think I believe in another hundred and fifty thousand to come out in a hundred twenty twenty three. That in itself would take a three hundred thousand dollars out of the million. To leave seven hundred thousand into twenty twenty four. We're not out of OMPF. Transitional money yet. So that'll get us to about eight hundred thousand dollars left. In transitional money that we won't have on an annual basis. So the factor is, is that it's nice to utilize the levy stabilization reserve to lower levy. it's nice to utilize the levy stabilization reserve to lower levy, which I think we've tried to provide in this three-year operating budget. We'll see money to be utilized from that levy stabilization reserve until the OMPF money is no longer there. We know that the member municipalities in itself are seeing them hit their limit, meaning that they're not seeing reductions in OMPF. They're actually seeing increases in OMPF. The county won't see that until our OMPF is zero. So just to keep that in perspective, when trying to utilize a strategy of that levy stabilization money. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Don't see any. We're going to take a five-minute break. Time very, very stretching. Get up, move. When we come back, I know John has a couple resolutions or whatever, Bill. We'll deal with those and then we'll proceed on with the rest of the meeting. We're going to take a five-minute break. Some of the stuff we got from Medavi was pretty tasty. I give some of it away. I give some to my daughter-in-law.
Yeah. It's very good.
I'm not a mint smoothie fan, and she was lamenting the fact she hadn't gotten any chocolates this year. And I said, you like mint smoothie?
Yeah.
Yeah? I'm just asking you. We getting everybody back? Four, five, get five. Six. Seven. We're missing Daryl? No, eight? Okay, we're back. Good. Okay, anybody else have anything to add to that budget presentation that we've had to this point in time? Not seeing any hands. I got a little motion here that says that Perth County Council receives a 2021 capital budget presentation. Moved by Doug Kellum, second by you, McDermott. Those in favor? Carrie, no, John, you're still there. And Bill, I think you were. We're, oh, there you are. So you are kind of looking to get some pre-budget authorization to take some of these capital projects to tender? Anything to add to that?
Thank you, Warden. And I believe the clerk has a resolution prepared for that.
Okay, so I do have one here. Perth County Council authorized the Public Works Director to tender capital projects and fleet for 2021 with awarding of tenders to be brought back to council for approval. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Walter McKenzie, second by Counselor Wilhelm. Any questions? Yep, Bob?
Yeah. So are we going to see the results of your lease and versus purchase on the loader before you move too far along on this?
That's for you, Warden. That's for sure. There will be a report coming back to council.
Thanks for asking that question, Bob, because I was going to ask that before we actually voted. I think there could be great merit in the lease on that thing. John?
And that's not just an exception for the loader. Anything that we go to tender for, and you're giving us pre-budget approval to go to tender for, those tenders come back before council for, for your approvals. So it's always allowing us to get moving on these tenders. And as I say, the only, the only particular one we're, we're going to be waiting on and not going to tender for is, is the elevator at this point in time.
Any further questions? Those in favor of that motion? That would be carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move ahead. Next on the agenda. I think everybody's had enough of budget for now. We will do council reports, and we have PC Connect November, December update. And is Maggie coming on to do that?
Just take a couple of seconds just to get people out of here.
Sometimes those plexiglasses, difficult to see that screen. Oh, we got Maggie there now.
Hello, everyone. Hear me okay?
Yeah, you're good.
Awesome. Perfect. So through the warden, and on behalf of the Community Transportation Steering Committee, I'd just like to provide a very brief monthly update on the PC Connect Transportation Service. So the committee met on Tuesday, December 15th, to receive an update on PC Connect following the first few weeks of operation. So since our meeting, and since this report was drafted for council, we have received some updated ridership information and data that I'd be happy to share with you today. So from our launch on November 16th to December 31st of 2020, PC Connect had a total of 109 passengers, with 68 passengers on Route A and 41 on Route B. So we had been experiencing some very steady growth. However, due to the current landscape of COVID-19, we do expect our ridership to decrease significantly this month and moving forward. So as transportation is deemed as an essential service, we will continue to operate responsibly in order to get riders to their essential needs such as employment. All PC Connect communications are focused on informing residents that the service is operating for essential travel only, and educating riders on how to travel safely and responsibly to get to their essential needs. So all other marketing paid, sorry, paid marketing efforts have been put on hold, and all of our efforts are towards encouraging essential travel only. A series of COVID-19 preventative measures are continuing, continue to be enforced on all of our fleet, which includes 50%, or sorry, 50% reduced capacity, mandatory face coverings, and increased sanitization practices. So we will be monitoring the situation closely as we all know the COVID landscape is changing daily. So we will be monitoring everything closely and continuing to work and consult with the public health and other transportation services. So the committee revisited the decision to join the Southwest Community Transit Association, which is also known as SCT, and have put forward the motion to officially join the association and sign the MOU. So the SCT is made up of other community transportation grant recipients with the purpose of formalizing our working relationship and to create economies of scale for common project elements such as a booking app, which we are hoping to acquire shortly. I just wanted to note that there were a few minor agreement changes requested by committee at the meeting. So those have been approved and will be reflected on the final MOU that is circulated for signature if it is approved. So the committee is also proposing that we move forward from a scheduled monthly meeting to only meeting at the call of the chair. So the committee believes that now that the service has successfully launched, it has delivered its primary mandate. Although if passed, the committee would only meet at the call of the chair, we will continue to provide a monthly update to council moving forward. That does conclude my very brief update on PC Connect. And welcome, any questions may have.
Okay, questions for Maggie? Daryl?
So you have seen a little extra quicker growth here. Then, 31st, there was a bit of a growth there, which was good news, that's for sure. No, I'll just bring to the council here. I see a few other cities are being scheduled on their weekends. They're not running as heavy. No, I know we have our schedule and we're running under it, but they really are coming back on transportation. It's interesting times for sure around because they're really getting beat up heavy in this. And it's unique. We'll see on this work. We'll go forward. Great report.
Any other questions or comments? Rhonda?
Just kind of wondering when we will decide if the buses will keep running with COVID? Like, if we get one passenger, will we change it, or we get no passengers, or will we always just keep them running?
Maggie, you want to address that?
Sure. So through the warden, of course, it's, it is hard right now with this landscape of COVID is changing daily, because people do still need to get to essential services. And we are seeing a lot of people use it to get to work specifically. We've seen some more uptake at LTI, which is great. We do hope that we can keep operating, given we don't have an outbreak. We're confident that our precautions and preventive measures are doing great so far. So definitely something to consider if we were to get a case, we'd have to revisit that. And welcome to everyone's suggestions on how we handle that. However, at this time, we're just monitoring the situation day by day and, and keeping a close eye on that.
Okay, thank you.
Walter?
Now, just, and maybe this is not a fair question, Maggie. This one, if you have a breakdown or know the breakdown, how many people are using it to actually to, to get to work as opposed to, you know, people using it for doctor's appointments and whatever else?
Through the warden, unfortunately, we aren't able to ask our riders straight up what their, what their purpose is of riding the service. We have started rolling out a feedback form that we, it is a question on the purpose of travel. So we are starting to gather some feedback that there's, there was back in December, some use of recreation. But at this time, we aren't asking, asking our riders when they board the bus, what their purpose of travel is. So it's definitely something we could look into, how we can, how we can start gathering that information. Because of course, it'd be some great data to have. But at this time, we don't have a breakdown of purpose of rides.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. So actually, Meg and I had a discussion yesterday, maybe. And we talked about the potential of continuing the operation or not. So at this point in time, Stratford would like to see it keep running. And there are people using it for essential service. The ridership in January is down substantially. But there are some people still needing that service. So at this point in time, we're going to keep it running. And as Maggie said, if we run into COVID, that'll be a whole new discussion and we'll be calling a meeting of the Transportation Committee. But as it is right now, it's going to keep running. But we are also stressing importance that it only for essential travel only. Anybody have any thoughts against that at this moment? Corey?
I guess it's just out of comment. Since this project's provincially funded, this might just determine that we make, make a decision earlier rather than later with keeping the service running as it is now. And then just may basically just earlier and up based on the decision as we run out of the provincial money.
True, but the ridership was picking up and there has been lots of interest shown. So it's actually looking better than I anticipated. And I think as Maggie anticipated. Okay, I got a motion here. Perth County Council receives the PC Connect November, December update report for information. And the Perth County Council approves the request of the Community Transportation Steering Committee to meet at the call of the chair. And that Perth County signs a memorandum of understanding in order to officially join the Southwest Community Transit Association. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Bob Wilhelm? You McDermott? Any further comments or questions? Those in favor? That's unanimous. We're good. Thanks, Maggie. Justin, I see your back up there. Okay, next, we're going to move on to bylaws. We only have one. Bylaw 3795-2021, be ready first, second and third time. And finally pass the 14th day of January 2021. And that is with your fee and changes by law for planning. For reference, do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, second by Matt Duncan. Last chance for comments or questions? Those in favor? She's carried. Okay, next, notice of motions. Do we have any? So we're moving on to other business. And I had a slight little error at the beginning and I was let know of. When Daryl was asking to have one removed, I honestly couldn't hear him well enough. I thought he said 5.02. He meant 5.12. So we will have to amend that first motion slightly if that's okay with the mover and the seconder. I can't even remember who did it, but so we'll put 502 back into the received and take 5.12 and as we move down to new business. Okay, 5.10, Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I certainly took note of the letter from Kingsville, which is on page 36 of our agenda package. I think, you know, there, there are many factors, of course, involved in making the decisions that the province has made with regards to current conditions, prevailing conditions for small businesses. But certainly, the public continues to express concern about the fact that small businesses have essentially been forced to close, but large businesses remain open and open without a whole lot of restriction, other than managing the precautions that have been given to them by various public health authorities. I find myself, you know, it's, it's a funny place, right? I have taken COVID certainly very seriously all along as a microbiologist by training. Certainly have a lot of understanding of the kinds of things that have happened, but I too find myself increasingly wondering about whether small businesses should have been ordered closed at this time in, in some cases. And so the Kingsville Resolution certainly presents us with an opportunity to lend support to the notion that when small businesses do it right, they do it right. And I would like to see a whole lot more data, to be honest, from the province about small business versus large business and why small business has been targeted at this point in time. So I'm expressing, I suppose, sympathy for the letter from Kingsville. The easiest approach, of course, would be for us to endorse this resolution, acknowledging that we too share the same concern as Kingsville. I think the concern I have about it, doing it verbatim is, of course, that this resolution was sent to the province before Christmas and pertained mostly to the holiday season. But I find myself at this point thinking that small businesses are bearing an undue pressure with regards to their precautions, especially since so many of them were so good. And in the absence of seeing clear data that small businesses are in contact traces that are fairly unequivocally showing that they are a high source than I have concern. And I think that we need to express that concern. So that's why I raised that one in particular, Mr. Warden.
That's fine. So I'm just going to ask a quick question. We have a letter here and that was 5.12, which is kind of along the same lines. So can we discuss 5.12 and then we'll go back to 5.11? And then if you want to do something about 5.10 and 5.12, then you can do it sort of on a joint venture. Is that all right? Okay, Daryl, 5.12, lean ahead a little bit because you keep cutting out on me.
Yeah, okay. Can you hear me good there? Yeah, I don't need to echo just talk of it's interesting times, frustrating, the lack of that. Again, myself as a livestock farmer and the Reform Coalition group there is all livestock farmers in in an actual understanding of how viruses spread and biosecurity, if you would. It's a rather interesting way of trying to contain a virus that's so detrimental or allegedly anyway. Just got a text message today. Walmart down there last, or not Walmart, a store down near Waterloo. Almost 600 cars in the parking lot lined up blocks, you know, people just flowing in and out of the building. It's so confusing and frustrating. And these small businesses have done such a good job. And people's input and staying in your bubble. I need to support this motion by the Coalition Group for sure. And we really need to ask ourselves, when is the cure worse than the disease or what we're after? And in my mind, we've surpassed that a long time ago. Nothing else to say.
Okay, so we've had two items raised here. Wishes of council, Todd Kassenberg first.
So while there's some common ground between my position and Counselor Herlicks, I think there's also some fundamental differences. I believe that COVID is a significant problem in our society. The death rates are 2.3%. Yes, it affects mostly the elderly. But when we allow conditions in our society to, to sort of say that it's okay for the elderly and the immune compromised to be at much greater risk than than the general population, I think we've done society a disservice. I think we're all needed and we're all valuable. And I am very concerned about a wide open society. I think that people largely do need to stay home. My concern is the competitiveness between small businesses that can sell things and large big box businesses that are reaping enormous profits during this season and, and have for this year and the last year throughout the pandemic. And I don't think that the unequal playing field is appropriate in these contexts. So my concern focuses more on allowing small businesses that, that, that can demonstrate responsibility towards the precautions that are required to remain open. And I think that there, we can create conditions for that. And in the absence of seeing the provincial data about spread of COVID through those environments, I, I am concerned that they have unduly affected the business climate. Beyond that, I am firmly supportive of precautions that keep our, all of our people safe. Our elderly, our immune compromised, et cetera. And some of that does require people being encouraged to stay home as much as possible. But why should large stores benefit disproportionately during this period of time? And we see small businesses in trouble, struggle to pay their rents, putting people out of work. And when they have as much commitment, in fact, in some cases, more commitment to managing appropriately.
Okay, so what are the wishes of council here? You're going to have to give me some direction as to what you want to do. Do you want to support 5.10? Do you want to ask for information? What do you want to do? Don't everybody speak at once?
Well, I'll suggest, I'll suggest that perhaps the request of the council is to ask the provincial government to share the information it has more, more clearly and, and more broadly with regards to the impacts of small businesses in the transmission of COVID-19. Because we are expressing concern about the fact that many small businesses have been shuttered. And we need to understand why.
Okay, so you're going to make that a motion?
I can, I will support that.
Okay, we got a seconder up in Mr. Doug Kellum. So any comment or question on that motion put forward to support and to ask for information from the province with regards to the effect on small businesses? And the discrepancy between small business and big business? Can we send it to Randy Pettapie, our local? Like, there's no sense sending it to wherever it's going to go back to. I think Randy and John both have to be connected to know what we want. Yeah, well, your 5.12 was sent to Randy.
I would recommend that we send this to the premier. I think that the province needs to take responsibility for the emergency orders that it has put in place and the, the range of conditions that are attached to that emergency order. And so I do think that the named recipient is the premier and the minister of health. But I agree that we need Mr. Pettapie and, and as a courtesy, Mr. Nader to be aware of our actions here.
Do you want to add the Minister of Finance on that, Todd?
I, interestingly, I, it's hard for me to discern the role of, of the Minister of Finance. But hey, the more names, the merrier.
Ultimately, it's the tax revenue they're losing by not having the small businesses open.
So you've made the case then, Mr. Warden. I would say that's fine.
Okay. So we've had the discussion here. So we're going to send it to the premier, the minister of health, the finance minister, Mr. Nader, Mr. Pettapie. And anybody else you think you might want to add on, we can add on. That's not a big deal. Those in favor of that motion? That's pretty well carried. Perfect. Now, 5.12, does that sort of cover you off on that for now, Daryl?
Yeah, you know what it does, but I, I think we still need to forward that as well to our local level. Again, they, they have respect for what's going on, but they just want a little more. And I'd be willing to move that, that we support this movement from the Reform Coalition. And we, at the local level here to MP and the VP, we support this and I'll move that.
All right, I got a mover. Do I have a seconder? Counselor McDermott? Okay, you realize that was already forwarded to Randy once. Okay, I have a mover and a seconder that we so exactly what do you want to do? Send this to your local representation? Support and send to your local representation?
Local representation, provincial and federal.
Okay, so I got a mover and a seconder. Those in favor of that motion? Just let me count here. I got to count. It's carried. Perfect. Okay, announcements. Do we have any announcements? Corey?
Yeah, I just want to basically kind of forecast what, what we'll be doing for the budget for next meeting. So we'll be getting into the operating budget, tab three and tab four, five, six, the rest of the binder. Based on time and what, what's on the agenda for that meeting on the 28th.
Yeah, I do believe there are some other issues that are going to come up, so we may not get as far along as you want.
I understand that. Just for the framework that you'll notice is that each of the division managers will be presenting slides on their budget sections that will tie into their business plan and the operational budget that you have within your budget binder.
Just try to keep them in order, that's all.
Right. So, so what it'll be for 28th, it will start with tab three and move on to four or five.
Okay, that's good. Tyler?
Through the warden, I just wanted to take a brief moment. I believe Counselor Kissenberg had item 5.11 for other business.
Oh, did you? Sorry. I missed that. What, which one?
5.11, township of Matachuan.
Oh, right. Sorry. Yes, thank you. Todd, 5.11.
So I, I think that Matachuan is quite right with regards to their letter expressing both appreciation, of course, for the range of grant programs that have evolved and have been made available through both levels of government. But also expressing concern about the time, response times for those. Certainly, we had concern in North Perth and I'm sure that our economic development team probably had some concern about some of the tight timelines that were involved with some of the turnarounds for grant opportunities. And so Matachuan has, in my opinion, rightly identified that for some of these grant programs that are available, small communities, small organizations, small municipal corporations are at a significant disadvantage often versus large communities in terms of having a staff necessary or the resources necessary to respond in the timelines that governments at senior levels have been placing on some of these conditions. Perhaps the one that was most egregious to me recently was the Rapid Housing Initiative and and essentially there was a six-week response window. The application came with two phases. It looked like there were hours and hours and hours of work and, and there was very little staff in, in North Perth to respond. I understand similar concerns were expressed by the city of Stratford team involved with social services. So I think that Matachuan has it right. And I'd like to move that we send a letter of endorsement for their letter appealing to higher levels of government to give reasonable timelines and, and, and consider the needs of smaller communities with smaller staffs.
Okay, sorry about that, Todd. I apologize for that. Comments and questions from counselor on, on other counselors on that? Matt? You're going to second that? Okay, so we got a mover and a seconder. Todd being the mover, Matt being the seconder. And you want that sent to where? You want it sent based on the same, they all municipalities and AMO? Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. Those in favor of that motion? Passed. And it's absolutely, actually, that six weeks on that housing one was a long one. We've had a couple come in that were, you get them on Monday and they got to be back in like 10 days. Okay, now, more announcements. Not seeing any. Okay, I need a motion to go into closed session. That would be Daryl and Bob Wilhelm. That would be Daryl and Bob Wilhelm. Those in favor? Okay, we're just going to be a couple of minutes because we have to stop live streaming here and whatnot. So I need a motion in open session to confirm what the decision was in closed session in regards to what the next word? Client, no, you know what I mean? Appointment of personnel. Upon the completion of a performance review, and that was moved by Bob, it was seconded by Matt or you? You. So I need you to revote on that, all in favor of that motion. And that's carried. Perfect. Thank you. So did you text them other people to come back? Need Tyler for sure. We have very little left to do. We have a confirmatory bylaw. Marion, can you be my clerk here for a couple sessions? Marion's going to be the clerk here for a couple of minutes because we want to end this meeting.
Oh, here's Tyler. I didn't see you when I walked over.
Okay, I have a confirmatory bylaw, 3796-2021. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of the county of Perth and its regular meeting held January 14th, 2021 is ready first, second and third time and finally passed January 14th of 2021. Moved by Counselor Cullum, second by Counselor Wright, I think. Those in favor? Scary. And we have a motion that the council meeting be adjourned at 12:41. Moved by Counselor Wright, second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? Scary, thank you very much. Now, if we go back into budget another meeting, would you rather stay same time, bit shorter? I'm sure you don't want to go longer. Same time and spend a budget would be okay? Depending on the amount of other material we have?
More, more breaks.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing myself, Todd.
My, my bum hurts.
Yeah, I had to stretch a couple of times. Okay, thank you very much, council, and we'll see you on the 28th.